It is 6:30. I got you again, Ben. Welcome, everybody. I'll call our meeting to order at 6:30 and start by asking Council Gill to introduce yourself since you're online.
Hi, Adrian Gill, District One.
Hope you're having a good week wherever you are. I'll mention meeting logistics. If you're joining remotely, we'd ask you to please change your name to your display to your first and last name so we know who you're talking to. When you speak, again, please start by stating your name and where you live. We ask you to keep your questions or comments to under three minutes. If you're speaking about a specific agenda item, please keep your comments germane to that topic. And if you wish to speak, you must be called on by the mayor. Once you're recognized, you may make a statement or ask questions, but you don't generally engage in back and forth dialogue in that in the meeting. And if you speak out of turn, go on too long, make non-german topics, you will be reminded of the need to rein it in. First up is to approve the agenda. Is everybody satisfied with the agenda? There are no objections. We will deem the agenda approved. Next, we have general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. And we ask you to limit your comments to five minutes. Is there anybody in the room who would like to be heard? Steve?
Good evening. I rise tonight to serve this lawsuit on the city and the mayor. Mr. Clerk, please accept these three copies. One for the city clerk, two for the mayor, one in his official capacity, one in his individual capacity. The filing is not about one contract or one meeting. It's about a pattern of concealment and circumvention. Decisions made without notice, records withheld without justification, public obligations quietly handed to private actors behind closed doors. The clearest example is the H Council's October 8 approval of the Whitenburg Real Estate Advisors contract for the 138-acre Country Club Road property. That contract was approved without required meeting packet materials, without a city manager memo outlining its impacts or intended action, without sole source justification, without the contract itself ever being shown to the public until two days after the vote. We were told it was merely to help draft an RFP. In truth, it grants an exclusive brokerage right to market and sell all or part of our publicly-owned land with commissions on sale, percentage of grand list incentives, and hourly billing at up to 350 an hour. The consultant who was paid to quote "plan" the new site now stands to profit from selling it. That's not public planning. It's a privatized speculation of public assets like they do in Russia. The adopted City Plan 2025, already under challenge, references Country Club Road, but contains no actual plan for it. The so-called actionable plan by Whitenburg was never incorporated through any statutory process, yet it's being treated as impositional. That's how our planning has been corrupted, community vision replaced by consultant control. The secrecy was complete. Public records requests filed on September 29 were still unanswered when the council entered executive session, a session that has no lawful basis, because there were no ongoing negotiations, only a finished contract awaiting approval. The public learned the truth only on October 10, when the contract finally appeared, identical to the September draft. The same disregard appears elsewhere with the Recovery and Resilience Commission, led by Councilor Ben Doyle, functions as a shadow government, spending public funds, hiring consultants, Kentucky city business outside the reach of open meeting and public records law. It even commissioned a private emergency preparedness plan for the city, written behind closed doors, then simply adopted by the council. Emergency preparedness is not a boutique consulting project. It's a core duty of government. Outsourcing it to a black box is abdication, not innovation. We see it, too, in police accountability. The so-called Police Review Committee, on which Jack McCullough sat, was structured to forbid looking backwards. When we refuse to examine past misconduct, we guarantee future misconduct. The city's continued denial of a fatal dispatch error shows the cost to that blindness. Even the right to public records has been turned into a paywall. Through inflated search and copy fees, the city has built what some residents call the Whitaker fee structure, pricing citizens out of their right to know. When oversight costs hundreds of dollars per request, transparency becomes a privilege, not a right. And here, in this very chamber, the pattern repeats. Residents are hard cut at the timer clock while favored voices are indulged. Councilor Jim Sheridan admirably fought to extend comment from time from three minutes to five minutes, yet selective enforcement has hollowed even that. People tell me, why should I speak? They don't listen. That cynicism isn't apathy. It's what happens when government pretends to listen while closing its ears. The pretense is corrosive, a quiet cancer on our democracy. Mr. Mayor, that's addressed to you. If you're paying attention? Mayor McCully, you are practicing attorney. You know the difference between confidentiality and concealment. You know that good faith requires transparency, yet you presided over a vote that excluded the public from the facts, then defended it as business as usual. This lawsuit exists because when every other door is closed, the courts remain open. It's not vengeance. It's an act of civic repair. The people of Montpelier deserve a government that does not hide its contracts, outsource its duties, or sell its public lands without consent. The buck stops here.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who'd like to be heard? Yes, come on up.
I'm here to speak about connectivity issues to the Country Club Road site. I'll quote that from the actionable plan back in June 2023. In the due diligence section, there was a tension to be paid to access and connectivity, noting several things. Key concerns of citizens was access to the site of the recreation, community amenities, as well as the new housing. That the city should consider multimodal transportation options, so youth, seniors, and those with mobility limitations. I'm actually not an owner of a car. I'm in a household with three persons. I'm the only one that can drive. We don't have a car. I have a personal interest in the issue. That same section cited that the city should initiate this work in advance of issuing the development RFP to look at the possibilities. Are we talking about expanding my ride or shuttle services? Can we leverage new technologies or alternatives? I have in mind car share and bike share, my personal agenda, but also working with the Complete Streets Committee on the bike share study that is forthcoming. The idea of those is to limit the burden, the traffic burden, and the number of single occupant vehicles, idea being to reduce emissions. And this is the purview of several committees. Energy, the housing, as well as transportation infrastructure. I was I've served on that for several years. Complete Streets Committee, I've served on that for several years. And I don't feel like the committees are really offering very much to advance this. So I asked the city, have you advanced that agenda in any way? Are there any planning grants in the pipeline to address the connectivity and access issues? I've noted that a better connections grant is a real possibility. Unfortunately, the deadline is 24th of October. I have not seen any interest shown from, this is a grant that requires municipal support, a 10% local match, but we could apply for a grant for up to $200,000, so 20,000 local match. And I personally offered support for the Better Connections application. So you know about that a couple of times over the course of a month. I'm left, you know, wondering whether the city will answer that there is something in the making in the pipeline. I really appreciate having you and also.
Great, thank you.
I think in practice, as you've missed, you know, realistically, we've missed the opportunity with Better Connections grant. But perhaps the city would offer an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I can tell you the answer to that is that in the in the current budget year, we we cut a number of positions in city government. As and as I point out frequently, cutting positions means cutting capacity. And so we were not didn't have the capacity to to apply for that. It's it's unfortunate because it is something that we would have liked to applied for.
You grant permission, they can apply by Friday and still get it offered.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Anyone in the room? Yes, come on up.
Colin Fowler, Bliss Road, also of the Complete Streets Committee. I guess in reaction to that, is there any opportunity if the Complete Streets Committee was able to offer capacity in submitting the pre-application interest form? Would the with the city council allow us to?
Kelly. So thank you for coming in and for making comments on this. So this is important to us. We did take a look at that grant. We are not in a position to be able to apply this year, but we do think that it's possible that we could apply in the next round. And so it is on the staff's radar. We did take a look at the grant and determined that we would not be applying this year.
And is now the time to make any comments on the RFP, or should I wait until that's addressed?
You should wait.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Anybody else in the room or? Anybody, anybody online who'd like to be heard? Okay, seeing none. We can move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to pass the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We've passed the consent agenda. Move on to item six, the staffing assessment.
So just to get this teed up really quick while you get set up. So we're gonna have a presentation for Accra Sure, and they'll introduce themselves in a few minutes here or less than that. But essentially, this presentation is intended to complement FY27. During last year's budget deliberations, we did provide the 2011 matrix report. And, you know, that report is a little old. And so we commissioned this report to take a look at the staffing changes in the past year and to give an assessment of where we are currently. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Karen and Katrina. They'll get started.
Hi, thanks so much for having us here tonight. My name is Karen Tierney. I'm the lead for the HR Intelligence Team for the New England Region of Accra Sure, formerly Hickok and Borgan. The city of Montpelier is a longtime client of Accra Sure's, and so we were pleased when they reached out about this opportunity to do this work. Katrina and I come to this project with some 50-odd years of experience in human resources and probably 10 years each in organizational design, including supporting most of the municipalities in Vermont, the larger municipalities in Vermont in one way or another. When the city manager's office had reached out about this opportunity to work on this assessment, they did so after hearing that we had done a similar assessment for the town of Shelburne in 2022. And the request was to look at the current state of staffing. And this was before the July downsizing exercise or activities happened.
There we go. So briefly, the agenda, we're gonna run you through these quickly. Purpose, we're gonna talk a little bit about the context in terms of demographics and talk about methodology and then get to the findings and recommendations and hopefully have a little bit of time for questions. This was, again, this is a brief presentation. Hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look at the report. And so I'll turn it to Katrina to talk about purpose and context.
Perfect. Thank you, Karen, and thank you all. So Montpelier's been operating with leaner staff, you know, for several years. And one other concerning pieces with that is that expectations haven't decreased, right? They're coming from us internally, externally. Those expectations have stayed the same. Your departments are still doing all the essential functions that they need to do. They're just doing under a lot more strain. And so, you know, we started out by asking, what's working? Where are we stretched too thin? Where do we have, I use the term a lot, and the slap behind me will know, pain points? Where are your pain points when we look at that? And what does it take to sustain the level of community expectations that are placed upon the employees of the city of Montpelier? And so it wasn't, you know, just about data. We didn't just look at data. We didn't just look at head counts. We really wanted to focus on the people, on the systems, and what it takes to just operate on a day-to-day basis. So across every department, one story that we've heard, one theme that we found was people are doing more with less, and they're starting to really feel that pain. So when we look at the demographics, this isn't shocking to any of you, I'm sure. It's a story of stability. You've been hovering right around 8,000, that mark, that population mark, for the past two decades. So while that sounds positive, it also means that your revenue base hasn't grown a whole lot either, even though your infrastructure, your service expectations are starting to increase. And so, you know, some of the statistics that are referenced in the report are maintaining 52 miles of road, 30-some-odd miles of sidewalk, almost 500 acres of park with fewer people than we had 10, 15, 20 years ago. And so the challenge isn't the population growth, it's the population change, right? You've got an aging demographic. We know that to be true. The tight housing market coupled with a smaller labor pool. It's everyone's finding it harder to attract and retain workforce. So economically, Montpelier is tied to state government. It's right in the center of your downtown. And when we went through COVID, when you went through floods and organizations really moved to that remote work, the city took a hit. You know, the overall energy of the city went down. The good news is, we're starting to see places come back. You had some really big staple companies stay downtown, Union Mutual being one. And it's anticipated that with the governor's new ask of people returning from remote work, even though it's a couple of days a week in 2026, that there will be potential for some recovery and some stability. And so that doesn't necessarily erase the staffing pressure. It doesn't make it go away, but it at least allows you to have some strategy around your budgeting, knowing that you've got a more stable band of revenue coming in. So again, you know, we didn't just crunch numbers. We talked to the people doing the work. We sat with every department manager and the city manager to understand what the workload looks like, what the structure of their departments look like, and how they're currently meeting, community needs. We also reviewed that 2011 matrix that Kelly spoke about a few minutes ago, including some additional budget and data, just to see what's changed, what has, what are we looking at that's different here? And so for me, the biggest thing that stood out, and I shared this with all of the department managers that I met with, is the commitment and dedication of your current staff right now. They are incredibly competent. They're talented. They're committed. But they are stretched thin. They're they're at the breaking point. And so, you know, I don't want to point fingers. I don't want to say that this is because of one thing or another, but it's really about just identifying practical, realistic steps that can align those expectations with capacity. And I think you just spoke to that earlier during the public comment section. It's a real piece that we're looking at. So when we move to methodology, you know, we framed our work around a few key questions. What are the department goals? What are the current projects? What's right now on the plate of all of these departments? Who's left to do the work? What are their skills? And what are the gaps? What are the gaps that these departments are now experiencing? We also looked at where expectations and capacity don't match, right? When we're like, when we run into something where people are saying, I don't have enough staff to do this. The community is asking where the expectation is X, and I just can't do that. Because that's where we see turnover and burnout spate. And so that was sort of the lens that we looked at this through. You know, on the flip side, we looked at strengths as well. We had that conversation with all the department managers. And there is an amazing sense of collaboration and creativity that's keeping the city moving right now. This team works together in a way that I haven't seen a lot of other teams function. And that's a real asset. But again, it's all under pressure. And so, you know, we really want to help the city prioritize from a strategic standpoint versus a reactive standpoint. Instead of sort of throwing it against the wall and seeing what sticks, we want to be able to say, let's look at the big picture and what's a strategy that we can apply around it. So when we talk a little bit about some of the the matrix piece, many of those same themes are still applying. And so this was a conversation that Karen and Kelly and Evelyn and I had at length multiple times. You know, what's in there? What's, you know, why is it still? Is it still valid? You know, your demographics haven't changed much. Your staffing numbers have dropped some, and your service expectations, your external pressures, and Karen will talk about that a little bit more, have all increased, right? So we can start to see that, that, that unbalance, if you will. You know, the matrix talked about sustainable staffing models, technology modernization, and the need for efficiency across departments. All of those pieces still remain relevant. And so instead of reinventing the plan, the city can use that as a foundation. Take what's still valid and focus on how do we apply that to where we are today, to the reality that we're living right now.
And some of the examples, just specific to the matrix report, some of the recommendations that are still relevant, implementation of electronic time sheets for employees, that we still believe to be a high priority, the implementation of a credit card payment option, also something that we believe to be still a valid high priority. And then something like Department of Parks and Trees and DPW working together to share not only equipment but resources. So those are a few examples of of current valid recommendations that continue in the matrix report. So as Katrina mentioned, in terms of organizational strengths, you know, there is an extensive wealth of experience. You've got long-tenured leaders who have depth of knowledge, depth of skills, and significant capacity as well as resilience in the face of these and these situations. And one of the things I would say is that, you know, while you have this this strong leadership team, you can continue to do what you're doing. The longer that it goes, the more that burnout and turnover becomes potential and a risk, as well as safety and quality issues. And we would say that when you start to see organizations that experience chronic turnover because of insufficient staffing and an imbalance between staffing and expectations, that you don't end up recruiting the same level of talent back into the positions if you do experience turnover. And so while we see that you have, you know, unique team collaboration, people really holding things together, working well together, significant relationships, these are things that are unique and shouldn't be expected. Not every organization going through this kind of situation is going to have that same level of collaboration and commitment. And so we call that out as a significant strength, but also a potential challenge in the future. So as well as looking at that leadership team, they are not only stretched, as Katrina mentioned, but there's also some examples of inefficient use of the leadership. A couple that we would refer to specifically, looking at DPW and FIRE, their leadership spending six to eight hours per pay period, looking at time sheets. And then in terms of police and FIRE spending, their leadership spending time on things such as covering patrol and administration. So again, you have the depth of experience, you have the skill sets, and they aren't able to be focused where they could potentially benefit the organization at the highest level because they're covering in these other areas that lower-level staff positions used to cover. You have some outdated technology systems, and this is something that was referenced in the matrix report from 2011, one being NEMREC, which obviously is not something that that Montpelier can control because that's a state system. But there are examples of systems that are still opportunities to be looked at, recognizing, and you'll see this in a couple of different places in the report, and I'll touch on it again later, that anytime you talk about system implementation and technology, you need to have setup, training, a learning curve in terms of individuals getting used to learning the systems. And then there's the optimization phase. And and so all of those things are even more difficult when you have limited resources and folks that are already stretched covering on other other situations. And so in terms of the persistent service level strain, we saw that across, we saw that across critical departments, but we saw that apart across most departments. And while I think you'll see in the report, and it should be expected that the focus on the emergency services is, you know, brings safety concerns and is is likely the first priority, you can't have an imbalance across the the organization without sufficient administrative communications. We talked about development and and grant writing skills. When you don't have that, it doesn't support these other parts of the organization that are, again, doing the emergency services. And so while, you know, one might say that at least we're covering the emergency services, but over time, and I'll tell you that Katrina and I have this conversation with a lot of organizations, you can't continue to win win the battle with quantity of work if you aren't keeping up the quality. And so the one thing I just wanted to mention here in terms of the service level strain, we heard a lot about the different committees and commissions and the hours of the month that are required in order to make sure that these meetings are covered and that the leadership team is really stretched without capacity for new programs, which is hard, right? Because every time, to be, that is a fundamental aspect of any sort of government is having task forces and committees and commissions that can do great work and come up with great ideas for how to move things forward. But if those those great ideas and initiatives can't actually move forward because there's, there's no one else to do the work, or a little bit is done here and there, then I think that overall, it ends up being a detriment to the organization. So aren't able to sufficiently staff these commissions and committees, and one example being the short-term rentals program, which came up through the Housing Committee, you don't, you don't have the capacity to manage that program. And so our, what you will find, you know, sort of spoiler, a spoiler alert, is that, you know, if you want this program, then what are you not going to do? And in that, the message being that, to the mayor's earlier point, that when capacity constraints are an issue, you need to make decisions intentionally, be selective about where you apply your limited resources. And in terms of leadership of an organization, in in today's modern work environment, that is a critical need. Montpelier is not unique in having limited funding and limited staffing and financial strain and staffing and workforce strain. And so how you move forward is, is, again, we'll talk about this, but again, thinking to leadership and how you are intentional about your resource allocation. So I already kind of gave the gave the story away. But so the main focus being on, number one recommendation being on reinforcing staffing and workforce sustainability. And so we referred to this a few times throughout the the report. You'll see creative staffing strategies, recognizing that You'll see creative staff, staffing strategies, recognizing that there isn't an expectation that you're going to discover, um, vast pots of money that are going to resolve this issue. And so what we mean when we think about creative staffing strategies, and what's interesting is that these, uh, these are things that are already in place. They're already happening in some instances. But thinking about how do you, how do you move forward looking to things such as shared roles or having what we would loosely call a floater pool? And so that is that you're cross-training folks who can help out or provide, uh, coverage across multiple areas, uh, instead of having individuals who are uniquely, um, trained or skilled in one specific role or aspect. Um, feeder pipelines, and this is something that I've seen other organizations do well, where you have a position in the organization, you bring new, um, new individuals, new talent into the organization, have them spend some time learning the organization, and the organization gets to learn the skillset, the strengths, and then moves that person on into a harder to fill position once there's, uh, been some initial period, uh, period of, of, of introduction of orientation and, uh, determination of what, where, you know, what, what seat on the bus needs to be filled. And, and so these are things that, uh, could be an intentional or strategic focus. Uh, in addition, all of these things, uh, benefit from a different look at how you do your recruit, recruiting and staffing and making sure that you are focused on staffing and onboarding for agility. Folks who have an aptitude for learning, folks who have an ability to tolerate change, limited resources and are nimble and, and have the ability to shift and adapt. Number two, prioritizing and focusing resources. So when it comes to this kind of a situation, how leadership can really succeed. And, and when I say leadership, I mean, not only the, um, administration, I mean, with this council as well, is focusing on the process, processes. So what are the priorities? Where are you focused? And being very clear and aligned on what the city will do and what the city will not do, and who will be doing it, and when it will happen, and how it will be happening so that there is, uh, clarity. Uh, in order to assist with that, uh, which we recognize is, happens in many different forms across the different departments, but having a centralized or a uniform, uh, prioritization inventory of some sort, um, that, that contains the list of projects or requests, um, that can be a focus for, uh, decision-making around where, where you are going to allocate those resources. And one, uh, you know, creative idea that I think has been, uh, in the works before is looking on how do you bring together folks from across the different departments to come up with creative ways and thinking around problem solving and tackling different projects that are outstanding. On my own time. Um, then thinking about long-term financial and operational, uh, stability. Ultimately, uh, we looked at, and we saw that there were different opportunities across the different departments to think about how to, um, do cost recovery and how to think about sustainable funding. We've already talked about development and grant funding. Grants are great. There's lots of them out there. They're a lot of work. They're not, it's not simple to apply for. It's not simple to, um, to even find them. And so that requires some level of staffing. Um, other examples in the city clerk's office, building and code enforcement, uh, division hasn't been able to, uh, generate revenue to cover operational costs. Um, and so looking at fee structures, processing efficiency, service demand patterns in order to come up with, uh, a more sustainable financial model. When we talk about, uh, water and sewer, uh, we have the resident, non-resident fee structures that could be looked at and evaluating online payment processing to reduce manual deposit handling. And reducing manual processes, um, again, I, I talk out of both sides of my mouth on this one. You know, you want to optimize and you want to, you want to use technology wherever you can, recognizing that that requires cost and, and staffing in order to implement. Which takes us to modernizing the, uh, the technology and processes. Some of the, the technology that we identified, we're focusing on HR, payroll, um, permitting, and as well as communication. Um, you implemented, you sourced and implemented SmartGov, the work order system, uh, as a result of the matrix report. Um, and, uh, there is a continued need for training, and we see that not all devices are compatible. So even when we say go and find technology that'll help you, there, it's not a quick solution. It takes time. Um, and in, in addition, system upgrades are expensive. So final thoughts. Uh, we mentioned the exceptional resilience. Um, and we mentioned in the report that resilience is not a strategy and will not continue to provide that foundation that you will need for the longer-term operational success and sustainability of services. Um, and in order to move forward or to determine how to move forward, again, it's not just simply reducing services. It's more about thinking about what is your new normal and being intentional about the strategy for how you're going to do it. Um, we, we talk about the resilience and we talk about how the team has come out of the, the most recent downside thing in July. But to be candid, when people lose staff, everything happens on the fly. They're trying to figure out what no longer exists and how they're going to cover things. And when you have leadership that are stretched as thin as they are, um, it reduces the opportunity for being intentional and strategic. So how are you making sure that that time is carved out and that there is support in order to make sure that there is, uh, an intentional approach to resource allocation going forward? Success will hinge upon that alignment and that focus. You have a great team. You have some amazing people. And, uh, as I mentioned earlier, the risk, the risks being burnout, turnout, turnover, safety, quality, emergency type instances. It, it doesn't take much for an organization to start to falter. It's can be a little bit like a domino effect once you start to, uh, impact, uh, and leaders start to burn out. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, I want to ask you a question of, you list, um, nineteen to twenty-one positions that could be added. You have some costs. Are those costs salaries?
Estimates based on, uh, fully loaded salaries plus benefits.
Well, salaries plus benefits.
And, and it's a rough estimate.
Thank you. Anybody else up here on the council? Obviously, this isn't something we're being asked to make any decisions on tonight. Adrian, do you have your hand up? Okay. Okay.
I just might, um, say that, um, you know, we intended to put it together for you just to give you some food for thought as we go into budget development. Um, so there will be plenty more to talk about. But we just wanted to give you sort of a, a quick briefing on where we're at. And if you have any other questions, please let us know.
Carrie, you mentioned.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for, for this. Uh, we've, we've been talking in lots of general ways for quite a while now about what impact our staffing decisions have on our services. And, um, this is really helpful to get a better understanding of some of the impact that it has. And I'm really struck by kind of the, the overall picture I'm getting of staff who are carrying on valiantly and they're doing really well, and they're trying to do every single thing that we ask them to do. And they're, they're hanging in there, but it, you know, can only go on for so long. And, and so I really appreciate the focus on prioritizing what it is that we want to do. And so starting to think, think that way, not, um, not how much money do we spend on it, but what do we want to do? And then figure out how we're going to do that. And if we have to drop other things because we can't pay for it all, then we have to drop other things. So I'd be interested to know more about, um, and not certainly right now, but just that you talked about a centralized prioritization structure or something. And I, I would love to see examples of that or just learn a little bit more about what that is like at some point. Okay, thank you.
May I say one more thing that I, that I didn't mention? So one of the things that comes up a lot of times when you do staffing audits is that people are very interested in the sort of one-to-one relationship across different towns and municipalities. You know, what does this position look like here versus there? And so I wanted to just call that out, that we've been asked this several times by the team. And, um, and it's been a discussion, a discussion point. Um, there are different approaches to doing a staffing assessment. And one approach, of course, is just looking at it from a, you know, hiring an industrial engineer, doing a time and labor study, and looking at how many minutes does it take to do this versus that? And then trying to compare across different, uh, organizations, does the maintenance manager in this town do it the same thing that the maintenance manager in that town? But it, it's not, it's rarely apples to apples because you're talking about people with different experiences, different skills and so forth and so on. And so I just want to leave it with the one point that I forgot to mention, which is around sort of a modern approach to, um, to, to leadership and decision-making needs to be a little bit more nimble. And so even folks who have sort of a propensity to say like, well, where's the data to support this? Which by no means is that a bad approach. I'm a big fan of data. But you have incredibly tenured, talented, knowledgeable, trusted, you know, trusted leaders. And I would say that, um, you know, sometimes we push back on our leaders by saying, show us the data and tell us why and how. And I would say, you know, I really want to encourage, uh, the council to lean into trusting their leadership. You've already invested the resources to, to, I know you can't say yes to everything, but, um, but in, as, as organizations go forward, the ability to react and be nimble and move quickly, which is going to be hard for stewards of, of public funding.
Thanks, Jim.
On the police and the fire, were these extra positions calculating how it might reduce overtime?
We didn't get into that. That is, uh, it, uh, the recommendations are based on the industry standards that were referenced by the department leadership in terms of, uh, what our expectation is, is that it would reduce overtime, but we would need to do a more, uh, involved analysis that I think the team is prepared to look at.
Okay.
So Jim, if I might also just speak to that a little bit, you know, it's something that we did discuss in reviewing this report, knowing that we do have a heavy reliance on overtime and also knowing that we need people. And so as part of the budget development process, that is one of the questions, and it's a good one, that we really should take a look at to see what the, the balance is. You know, I think, um, having an assessment that kind of, you know, calls the number based on an industry standard is good. But then we're going to have to balance that against our resources and also the tipping point of our current overtime. Um, and so we'll look at trends, um, and see where we're headed. And then we'll give you more information. But it's something that we definitely flagged as part of the study, you know, knowing that like, it's something we've identified. We know that it's a thing. Um, and we also want to make sure that the departments are supported with adequate staffing levels.
Well, it literally might, you know, bring down that cost that's after that if working somewhere. And, and that is, yeah, something I think is critical with the eight and five. You know, the others are smaller, but, I'd be interested in time to hear what both of the chiefs of those two departments said.
It would be great if we could even hire for all the positions that we have now that we constantly advertising for, so.
Well, I, I'd be actually particularly interested in that analysis. And I'm curious if, and I'm also curious about, you know, the, the float of pools and the leader things. And I wonder if, certainly not tonight, but if you, um, if you have other communities that have, um, successfully implemented some of, some of these strategies that, you know, we might be able to learn from. Uh, and maybe you could pass that information along and, and we could take a look at that. I, I really appreciate the report. It, um, I, I've been worried about, um, you know, what the results of the, of the budgeting we did last time, which I thought was, was difficult. I thought we needed to do it, um, but I worried about the consequences. And, um, there's some interesting suggestions here. The overtime is, that analysis could be very interesting. I, I really, it'd be nice to talk to, to an outfit that has made it work. If you don't know of one, maybe you could help us find one.
Yeah. And, and I would tell you that you are not alone in this. I think, you know, each of the organizations we work with are, are struggling in their own ways. Some of the, the issues are unique, but we can certainly, um, look to our, look to what we know into our contacts. And we're happy to, happy to provide examples of what we do know that have worked.
Great, thank you.
Adrian.
Yeah, I think I just want to add on to Sal. I mean, as we, you know, move into 2025, 26, with really an unknown future for funding, both at the federal level and just, um, lots of services that are going to be cut, coming down from the federal and state. And, you know, I, I don't see this situation getting any better. And I really want to understand, you know, what are some out-of-the-box ways of thinking about this? You know, as you said, our, our community hasn't grown in 20 years. It's, you know, the way I think about it is we have a paycheck. We haven't gotten a raise, you know, a substantial raise in 20 years, but we keep, you know, paying our bills and we keep, you know, paying our staff. It's, it comes down to math. And so I think we need to be very creative in how we think about the future. And I think it's an, an amazing opportunity for us to be innovative and to be leaders, to think outside the box of how we want to manage our city and think of some really creative ways to engage our community. I mean, we've heard from, you know, volunteers that want to help us. And they are at the helm. We have a, a grant committee. We have people that want to help write grants. I think we need to be very strategic and thoughtful of how to take advantage of people's highly skilled talents in our very educated, um, you know, Montpelier. I mean, we have amazing people in our town. I know they can't go dig up roads or pave or, you know, respond, you know, police or fire, but I think we really need to push ourselves to think differently. Um, because I just don't think it's going to get any better anytime soon. And I think we have an opportunity to, to be creative here.
Thanks, Adrian. Ben, were you?
Oh, just quickly, I just wanted to echo what Sal was talking about around, if you can provide us with examples. I am really interested in that kind of cross-sector collaboration floater thing. Just thinking about like, what are the transferable skills between departments that could help everyone? If you just see a community's doing that well, I'd be really interested to know.
I mean, you're already doing it with yours at streets and plowing. I mean, I think you've, you've got some examples of it. It's just, uh, it requires sitting down and sort of thinking about what are our similar positions? And, and you probably already do it in ways that you don't realize it. And so again, it's unfortunate. It takes a little bit of time. Um, we certainly can ask about what other, what other organizations we work with, if they're doing it in any specific way. But I, I would really encourage the leadership team to get together and sort of to think about it. And it doesn't have to happen all at once, but I think that it's, it's how you build, how you build your, your programs going forward. We're going to hire for a position that had these skillsets which could be applied here, here, or here.
Whereas taking person with this, like, oh, I'm going to put you here now and there tomorrow. There's more strategic thought behind that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I also recognize and appreciate that there's probably a lot of cross-collaboration already happening on teams that may not be as successful tops.
Thank you for the presentation again. And I agree with everybody mentioned, like, all the ideas are listed before. I am also interested in if we have any plan, uh, to, um, answer some of the staff concerns. I think as an attachment, you put like graphs and like you show each department, right? Some of the answers are like in the blue part, which is positive. Some of the departments, people are saying, oh, I don't, uh, nobody helps me to find a creative, like, to do my job. I don't feel supportive enough to do different things, to try different things. So what will happen with those concerns? Because it is important for the motivation. Yeah, let's talk about budget. Let's hire more people. But if that concerns will be the same, if they stay like that, then there will be still some problems because you, you talk about burnout, right? And people are already doing so much thing with a limited budget and, uh, limited time. If you don't do anything about those concerns, it will be worse. So is there any plan from you or the city staff? I don't want to go and call out each department, but if you check the, um,
I'm guessing you're referring to the engagement.
There was an engagement survey.
Yeah, so I can, I can find it, but yeah, there are graphs, right? Blue and the red.
Yeah, so what I would just say generally is that the challenge with lean organizations is that is that you get into a very task oriented focus, operationally getting things done, executing instead of thinking strategically about how you can can engage. And I think that the heart of an engagement survey is how you keep and retain folks. I think that when you get away from focusing on those longer term development, retention, recognition, training, you know, those kinds of activities that you start to erode the quality of your team. Your team may turn over and then the next person you get may not be as talented because they may not be willing to come to an organization that doesn't have those things. And so again, it's a cost and it's definitely something that a human resources person of one for an organization of a hundred and thirteen is going to be limited. You know, one of the things we focused on, we heard about a lot where there's public records requests and how much time those are taking and covering some of the administrative. So again, I I I don't want to beat a dead horse, but, um, you know, resource prioritization, prioritization and allocation. And while human resources may not be, uh, as critical of some of the other services, uh, when it comes to these types of of periods of time of change, ambiguity, uncertainty, um, turnover, transition, your human resources and leadership are really going to be key to making it through it in a way that's positive.
Thanks for taking public comment, Dave Bellini, you've got your hand up.
Hello, everybody. Dave Bellini, District Three. Um, thank you for the report. I did read some of it myself before this meeting. I agree with, I think, everything I've heard, but what I did hear was just, uh, things I've heard working for state government for four decades. I mean, what she's really, what these ladies are talking about is just basic management one O one, competent management. This isn't new. I don't know how much you spend on consultants to tell you things that you should already know. If you have departments that are getting slammed by overtime, uh, you need to add more employees and you will get those employees at a discount if you lower the amount of overtime. That would have been one of the first things I expected to see, but I guess that's, you know, on another channel, uh, later on. Uh, so I echo the thoughts of, yeah, drill down. Ask your, ask your fire chief or your police chief or your public works directors. You know, if you had another position, how much overtime would you cut? And we had another employee, even though you got to pay him benefits, you're getting those employees at a discount and you're lowering the burnout rate. I mean, God, that's, that's nothing new. Uh, so I I hope that you do that. I don't mean to sound edgy at all, but I'm a little disappointed. That wasn't like one of the first things you talked about because money's, money's tight everywhere. So, and I agree, you've got great talent. Uh, your fire department is phenomenal, fantastic. I can't say enough good things about them. So I'll stop there. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Dave. Peter.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Peter Kelman, uh, uh, I live in, uh, uh, Mountain View Street. Um, I have five questions that I don't really want you to answer now, but I want to ask them and I just want to make a then a brief comment. Uh, when was this study commissioned and presumably approved by the city council? What was the budgeted cost of this? Was, what was the process? Was this a single source selection? Uh, uh, for, uh, when were the interviews actually carried out? When, I, I, that's not clear to me. And why were the interviews carry up only of the department heads and managers? Why not staff, city council, relevant city committees, and even a sampling of citizens? I don't understand why this was, the interviews were only of 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 the, uh, uh, department heads. Now, my comment is, this report seems like the timing is off. This report, I'm glad that the work is being done, but until we have a new city manager, I think it would be inappropriate for the current group, city council and manager and so forth, to take very much action on this until we have the city manager who would presumably lead this. Um, the second thing is that even though i- i- it's a little bit too soon, it's also a little bit late. Some of the con, some of the content as reflected by the comments as opposed to the report, like that 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 the state workers were going to come back because the governor said so in July. Well, that's not happening so quickly anyway. All right. I I am concerned that this report, like many reports, is avoiding the elephant in the room. It's making generalizations about this incredible, exceptional leadership team that we have. Well, okay, without any disrespect to any of the people who are on the leadership team now, um, there have been some changes, there have been some improvements, but this leadership team was not the leadership team over the last fifteen years since the matrix, uh, was done in twenty eleven. If we had such an exceptional leadership team, why have we come to this pass? Twenty eleven, it was fifteen years ago, thereabouts. Recommendations were made that did not come to pass. So let's not go go overboard in generalizing about this, this exceptional team. Not everybody is exceptional. And when people aren't exceptional, that can cause disruptions. And when people are, um, I think the term used was, uh, uh, there's a lot of trust. What goes along with trust is loyalty. And sometimes what goes along with loyalty is not good, healthy.
Thanks, Peter. It's your three minutes.
Elephant in the room.
Thank you.
Can I add one second?
Yes.
Uh, the document I was referring to is a pending speed, employee survey summary. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, anybody in the room would like to make a comment? Okay. Thanks so much for doing this. There's obviously more to say and be done about this. All right. Next up, we have item seven, uh, development of the RFP for Country Club Road. Yes, that's your Q. Hi, Stephanie. Thanks for being here.
Welcome. Person. I I can start with a little, uh, overview of why we're here tonight, if you'd like to talk about the item, um, before you. So I'm Stephanie Clark. I'm Vice President of White and Burke Real Estate Advisors. I'm, um, a representative to, um, communities, to help communities thrive, to plan their um, real estate assets, to help them do their, um, their best, their best work to foster community engagement and economic development across the state. So what I've submitted here, um, for the packet and for the item tonight is a summary of the work the subcommittee did over the past several weeks, two weeks, I don't, I think it was just two weeks. It was a lot of work in just a short amount of time. So the, um, the memo that was submitted to the city, to the council summarizes the work that was done and it also kind of hit some of the highlights of the RFQ. And I wanted to make a few points about that. One in particular was that, um, we recommended, and I just want to make sure this is clear for the public, that we recommended an RFQ process first. And the reason for that is because the, um, the level of preparation that's required for a proposal is quite substantive. And a lot of times what you want to do is get all the interest you possibly can and attract as many different types of developers, development partners to the table to engage with you before you ask them to put tens of thousands of dollars into a proposal for you. And that way you really can capture a lot of interest and weed out what may not be the right fit for your community. So we always advise, starting with a RFQ, it also, um, keeps the process moving fairly, um, and, uh, you know, expeditiously, and especially when you have a timeline where you want to start identifying who that partner might be, it helps to start with that process. So the RFQ, it starts at a kind of a more of a wider funnel. And so it really intends to give a bigger, um, uh, uh, kind of attract, give the big picture to the development community and attract folks to submit their qualifications and expressions of interest and really, uh, help them to understand where the city is and also to understand where they are. And one of the things I wanted to point out is that this is just one step. There are several steps on this path. Um, this is absolutely by no means a purchase and sale agreement with a developer. We are not proposing that you're at any juncture where you're going to sell the land, um, today or transfer ownership in any way. There's going to be several, several steps before that part, before that time, um, comes and lots more opportunities for input and discussion. And so what this does is really open the door for partners. And what I want to recall is that during the twenty twenty two to twenty three master planning process, one of the things of feedback we heard a lot was not having anything to respond to. And so not really having a plan in front of them, in front of the public, to be able to comment more substantively. And so this, it, but it's a chicken and egg. How do you respond to something if you haven't given a vision for what you're looking for in terms of density and in terms of, um, uh, various, all the different components that went into that vision, that concept document? And so, um, what this does is start bringing the development partner, the market forces and the innovation and ingenuity that can come from the private sector to the table to make them part of the discussion. And, um, and what I think that, you know, instead of doing things in a bubble, that can be helpful. It's also really important because taking the next steps with due diligence without any kind of concept plan, without actual, um, impacts known is, is is not effective. You can't get, you know, regulatory review and you can't get certain, certain approvals and certain due diligence done without having some sort of land plan. So this allows you to take that next step. Um, and then, so in this, uh, RFQ that the subcommittee developed, we, we did it as a process with, um, calling through lots of options and putting together some context and some supporting documents. Um, the plan is pretty clear on, um, the timeline, but basically it would go out as soon as this is approved to a list of of, uh, development partners that we've identified. The subcommittee helped, um, contribute some suggestions to, and that goes out. And then there's a timeline for questions from the development community. And I've outlined a series of subcommittee meetings that we're still vetting about availability, but that would help to then have the subcommittee be vetting those questions and trying to make sure that the responses all align um, with the the city's history. And part of that, um, process would be a meeting to talk about communications. Um, it's really important that the communication and the message around this RFQ and about the mission of this property and about the process is clear and is clear to the residents of the city as well as beyond for any potential development partners you may want and you may end up partnering with. Um, so that would be one of the steps that we recommend is that the subcommittee discuss communication strategy about getting information out clearly. Um, within existing channels, you know, there's a lot of really robust channels, so, um, in the city already. And so being able to utilize those and get that that information out about the status and things like that. So, um, in addition to the RFQ, I believe one of the asks will be to expand the, um, scope of the subcommittee to continue this work and to continue the RFQ process through, um, evaluating qualifications, creating a shortlist that comes back to the council for, um, authorization to then invite that that shortlist to submit proposals and to have their involvement throughout that, which I I think at this point was not clear. So that would be one of the asks. And, um, I also then included in this memo something about how do we add into the RFQ a little more information about how the RFP process is going to run? Because in the RFQ, there's a typical section where you give them a heads up, what's going to be, what's going to be required of that in the request for proposals? So they have a clear understanding before they throw their hat in the ring that what is going to be expected of them in the proposal process. And so one of the things that would be valuable is if we are asking for them to do any public component that they know about that in advance. And so the public component that I'm, um, that I'm proposing in this is to have the, um, proposals out in front of the counselors with plenty of advanced notice so that then counselors can receive questions from the community before the interviews happen with the actual finalists, um, from that, from that proposal list. So we're whittling it down here. We're going from qualifications to proposal to five, um, invitations to submit proposals. And of those proposals, um, there will be a smaller group that you'll want to interview. And so most likely, it sometimes comes back that one of the proposals is a nonstarter. So, you know, there's a little bit of back and forth and iteration in this process. And so one of the things is to have a list of questions that you're asking of every team, um, for fairness. And in the development of those questions, it would be great to have, uh, an opportunity for all the counselors to have heard from their constituents about what they want to hear, what they want to know from the proposal, from proposals. It's not part of a typical process when this has been done in other communities, but I think it's a valuable addition. And so I was recommending it here in my memo, um, for the council to consider tonight. Not if there's anything else I need to cover except just answering questions.
I think that's a good start. Thanks, Stephanie, and thanks to the members of the committee to, uh, for the work you put into putting this together. I think it's very thoughtful and it's, it's, it's getting us, as you said, another step along the process. And, you know, uh, when Timmy was on the council and he's not on the council anymore, what, one of the things he kept saying was, well, we don't know anything until we are talking to developers to see what the, what they think they can build and what they want to build. And so I think this is getting us closer to that, that, that point. Ellen.
Yeah, thank you, uh, for the presentation and I will echo, uh, Jack, thank you for the subcommittee. Um, all their work, I know you used to meet like eight AM, like in the morning, uh, then just go and do your work. It's really, uh, also, um, sacrifice that sacrifices, right? So I want to ask if we approve this document tonight, are we approving everything in it? Or is there any chance for us to, uh, revise? For example, I have some concerns under the incentives, like one dollar purchase price, uh, wave water and silver cup fee, like some of the things, I don't think it will be positive uh, when we think the committed, um, assets, uh, perspective. Because our committee paid a lot of money to purchase that land. We already kind of lost quite a bit of time and money. Now we are saying, oh, we will not charge anything. So is there anything like we, again, do we have to approve this document entirely? Or we can just like discuss and make some, um, revisions?
Um, I don't know necessarily the protocol or procedure on that, but you can do live edits. Is that what you're saying? Yeah, yeah, I think so. I mean, I'm, that's not my expertise about your procedure on that particularly, but, um, but I can speak to some of those concerns that we talked about in depth at the subcommittee meeting, but I can also defer to others if, you know, it's up to, I did make those recommendations, so I can explain why I made the recommendations and then if you have other things, okay. So.
Also.
Yeah.
Most of the public, for the agenda.
Yeah.
Coming to the research will be great.
Sure, absolutely, yeah. So there's, yeah, the rationale behind any of the components is, you know, fair game to talk about for sure. Um, so when we, when we look at these incentives, when we think about what the goal is, the goal of this process is to make housing doable here. I'm not even going to say affordable, I'm just going to say doable, possible. Um, what we're seeing statewide is the inability for anyone to build housing without subsidy. Outside of Chittenden County, it it's mostly second homes or big, 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 big mansions that are happening without subsidy. So what can we do as a, and and this is not unique to Montpelier. This is every municipality that has any land asset is looking at how do we do something to get housing built? So I'm going to give the example of Berry, for example. They just, within the last year, looked around at their land assets, realized that they are overparked, that because of the changing dynamic in in office use, that they have an extra parking lot. And they put it out for an RFP and said, any developer can make it work or by taking out the land price of that, um, within the, within the formula, let's do it. And so they now have an affordable housing project that's going to vote. And so they now have an affordable housing project that's going to vote in two weeks for, you know, 31 new units because they're giving it for a dollar. They're also throwing in $2.4 million of tip. They're also throwing anything you can throw at that project to make it possible. And similarly here, you know, making housing work at a place where there is no current infrastructure, there's very limited current infrastructure. So that's why we're applying for the grants for the infrastructure. It's really a, an important piece is to reduce barriers to entry. And so it's very, very common for municipalities to sell a piece of property for a dollar. Now, you paid $3 million for the property, but what we're selling are buildable areas, much smaller subsets of the greater property good. And so the greater property that's going to continue to be used for recreation, for conservation, for active and passive recreation is, it is the investment, is part of the investment. But you're also investing, you're actually acting as an investor into this housing project by going with a $1 purchase price. And that can be a real incentive. It's why people look, it's why developers are going to pay any attention because they're going to look at it versus this or somewhere else they could buy land. If it has a price tag on it, this other property that has a price tag of current market value versus this property, well, maybe I want to go here. And, you know, this is, that's the asset. That's one of the things you have to offer. So it's one of the arrows in your quiver. Then the sewer, water sewer is similar.
I will just ask Paul a one question, one, one more question. So I know you discussed it in the subcommittee meetings, but probably just for the public knowledge, is there any other incentive we can offer for the purchase price than the $1?
Sure, you can offer anything. I mean, you could offer a thousand dollars or, you know, you could do some nominal fee. I mean, it's really no, there's, there's, the important piece is to say it's under market price, you know, to make it competitive with surrounding areas where it might be cheaper to build, it might be, you know, higher demand, who, who knows? You know, somebody from Chittenden County where they can get higher rents, which is just the reality of it is, you know, that, that could be the competition. And so what you're trying to do is, is trying to make that even out a little bit. But could you do a more, a higher number? It's up to, it's up to the council.
Yeah, my point is if we just do not have that one, but offer other ones, this land will be so attractive, yeah, attractive to developers. Like, is this really, really the most important thing to attract the developers?
Yeah, it's one of them. I mean, it's definitely one of them. It's one of the only options that a municipality, I mean, because you, because you can't, you can't do certain, you, you cannot do certain things. You can't completely take away, you know, you can't guarantee they won't go through Act 250. You can't guarantee certain things where you could take away other barriers. This is one of the only barriers. So that, that one of the only levers, there's other levers in there. So if you take that out, is it still competitive? It's less so.
Yeah, thank you.
Adrian.
Okay, I have two things. I just wanted to follow up. I mean, that dollar thing is, you know, it's come up a couple of different times, but I think it, you know, if we can develop some talking points, because it's a math, right? It comes down to math, right? So it comes down to the development of the property. And if we can, I don't know how we do this, math is not my strong suit, but like project, right? Project some scenarios like eight, like kind of looking at our buildable, buildable land. And so, yeah, it's a dollar. We paid $3 million for the property, but how much, how much could we be bringing in, right? Like, what is that equation? What does that forecast look like? So it stinks that in the news and everything's like, oh my God, we're selling the land for a dollar. But I don't think we've been able to tell our story about what the potential, you know, cost benefit analysis could be for that property. So I think that's an opportunity once again for us in Montpelier to change that narrative and say, you know, yes, if we go out to developers, we save for a dollar and we build X amount of houses, then it equals XYZ, right? Whatever the smart people are that do that, like I think that would be a good way to kind of have a rebuttal for that and show that mathematical equation. So that's number one. Number two, Stephanie, sorry, I'm not there to, to see you. I'm in Atlanta this week. So one of the questions I've got, since we've put this out on Friday to the public, a couple of people have emailed, asked about the CAD drawing. So are they available to developers? Will they be, be available to developers? So if you can just share what that process is and timeline, just so that people could know what that is, that'd be helpful for the people that asked.
I can answer that. That's a good question, Adrian. I, let me look at what we have here. I think we have CAD for almost everything that's newer. There's a 1991 survey that I doubt we have CAD for. I don't think CAD existed. So, but everything else that had any kind of CAD work, yeah, yeah, we, I mean, those are, those are property of the city. So we can make those available. If we want, we can just make it available right on the site or we can say by request. You know, and that could have been a question that might come from the development community anyway. So it's good to get ahead of that.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to make those available on the site, just so everyone is an equity issue, right? So it's just available, it's there, people don't need to request it. It's just everyone has equal access. That would be nice.
Sure. And we'll put, yeah, we can just put that right on the, yeah. Yeah.
Jim, I mean, Jerry.
Well, I'm, I'm bothered by $1 because if you break it out when we paid for how many acres, and I'm not sure what the building costs. It's like $20,000 an acre. We gave away 20 acres, you know, at that. That's a lot of money. And what kind of control are we going to have? Whoever buys this, what they're going to put in, are they going to put in what works for them?
I can answer that. I mean, it's, that's what the whole proposal process will be. So the proposals will come back and show what their vision is. And then that's when the city has the opportunity to weigh in and say yes or no. And then it does need to go through zoning and, you know, development review.
And, and how much has to be like subsidized housing?
Well, if we do get the CDBG DR money, there is a requirement for low to moderate income. That's within a range that we have identified here. But that's also dependent on the phasing of the project. So right now, the 20 acres within the buildable areas is we've asked for the proposals to come back and say how many of those areas versus not? Do they want to have, if somebody could come back with a phased proposal that shows all 20 acres of buildable areas? Somebody could come back with just a first phase, which could be all load moderate income. But maybe the first phase is entirely market rate duplexes and triplexes. I, we don't know yet.
So we have no clue of really how much this is going to bring in for our tax base. Because I know in this community, there's kind of a myth that, well, we can build our way out of a tax problem. And that's never happened in quite a few years. We've done building and it's never changed. In fact, the tax problem has grown. I think the only way we can build out of it is by having millionaire homes and filling them with millionaires. I don't see a lot of what we're going to do is going to bring us a lot of money to offset what we paid, plus all the things we're giving up, plus we got to pay you. I mean, it just starts to add up after a while and get to be real money. Now, what I would like to ask is, are you in control of anybody who comes up and says, gee, I want to get 10 acres for a dollar to do something else? How does that work?
To do what exactly?
Say, I wanted to buy 10 acres myself for a dollar, donate it to a church so that maybe they could use it to put land for, and, and it would be even undeveloped land. And they could use it for maybe to say, because I'm going to go back a little bit. When we cleaned out Confluence Park, there was no place for them to go. I suggested a couple of places for the unhoused to go. Nobody picked up on it. So we could use a corner of this for unhoused camping, because if it's undeveloped, you, all you have to do is maybe lay down a tent or a sleeping bag. It doesn't have to be big flat areas. And we could possibly find some way to help a church that had all kinds of tents around it to at least have some land where these people could be told, hey, this is where you can go and you don't have to get chased around all the time.
So the, the process would be that they can shoot, that proposals can come in for the buildable areas only. So it's not, it's only the buildable areas. We're not talking about any of the other areas. And somebody came in.
Jim, please let her answer your question.
So, you know, they would come in with proposals for those buildable areas. The remainder of the property stays within city ownership. And then that city ownership is however the city wants to steward that. In the actionable master planning process, it was decided it would be for passive and active recreation and conservation. So then this would be only for those developable areas. And the buildable areas are if somebody comes forward with a proposal and we, we decide to go into a development agreement with them, that development agreement has restrictions and binding covenants that that connect the work that they're going to do with what they said they were going to do within a range, of course.
No, Carrie, I know I called on you, but Sal says he has an answer to the other question.
Well, we made a considerable effort to, numerous efforts to get an answer to the question about how much affordable housing would be required. And the most recent information that I have, and I don't know, like, maybe you have more information, is that it's tied to the, it's a calculation based on the amount of HUD money that we receive for infrastructure. So it's not an infinite, an infinite percentage or a percentage of an infinite amount. It's a percentage specifically of the amount of money we get from HUD. If we get $10 million from HUD, we would use a calculation based on the average price of a unit and a percentage of, 20% of that would need to be affordable. Is that a fair description?
Yes, Mike Miller, Planning Director. So yes, and the calculation would come out for the 8 million. I think we calculated it would be probably in the range of 16 units.
16 units, yeah.
So we may build 100 units, 16 of which would have to be affordable. If you built 300 units, 16 would have to be affordable. If you only built 32, 16 would have to be affordable. It's just, it's a fixed number, not a percentage of what's coming.
Thanks, Mike. Carrie.
Yeah, thank you. So I wasn't on this subcommittee, but I really wanted to understand more about what's, what is all, what's going on. And so I tried to attend as many of the subcommittee meetings as I could. And yes, they were eight o'clock.
It was a valid effort, Carrie.
It was really early, but they are, they were all reported, right? So if anybody wants to go and watch them, they're there and you can even watch them. But it was extremely helpful for me and I was really impressed with the way the whole process ran. I felt like the, the combination of the expertise from White and Burke and the staff and the, the counselors who were there, who were really kind of weighing everything. I, I thought it seemed like a really good process. It was very educational for me. And so one of the things that, one of the ways that I've really changed my thinking about this, and it largely has to do with watching a lot of this process, I've always been, I've always felt it was really important that if we were going to contribute our, our money, our municipal money to a development, it would have to be because we were getting something in return for it. So that we can't sell our land for a dollar if, if, if the main outcome of that is that some developer makes a whole lot more profit than they would have otherwise made. And that's it. So, but I'm really, I'm really seeing it and I'm expanding my thinking about the kind of benefit that we, that we get. And, and I really like the idea that this $3 million investment we have made is, we didn't make, we didn't spend that money thinking we're going to get $3 million back. We spent that money thinking we're going to get housing and recreation. And there's various ways that that can happen. And so I think this is a good process for getting that going and making that start to happen. And I'm also just been thinking about the, the incredible cost of building now. I mean, it's, it's crazy. And I know that people say that a lot, but I think I've been trying to look at it really concretely. And it is almost impossible for someone to just, to build something that they could have built 30 years ago. And they can't now because of things that are beyond anybody's control and has just changed so much. And it's really contributes to this, the growing income inequity that we have. And that, you know, the people who are super rich, they can still build things, but they're getting few and far between. So what can we do as a community to help address that? And one of the things that we can do is we can put our community resources towards supporting development happening. And all of these, all of this, this plans that are in here, they do involve some level of affordable housing or workforce affordable housing, which I really appreciate that being specified in there. So it's, it's not, you know, it's more about people being in the, how much is the median income of the, of the community? So it's not tied to, it, well, anyway, it's, it's more practical, I think. And it's very reassuring to me that that's in there. So I think we're, if, if we keep all of these incentives in here, even though we're not going to get our $3 million back, we're going to get housing and we're going to get recreation. And, and I think it is worth it because there's only so much that we can do. But we can do things like sell it for a dollar, like waived water and sewer hookups and all that, those things that are outlined in here. And, you know, at the end of the day, it's still going to cost a fortune to build something up there. And the developer is still going to have to feel like it makes sense to them. But so I, I feel very good about, about it, even though a year ago I probably would have said, no, 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 no. I mean, I think I have said for other suggestions, we cannot land for a dollar. So, but I really changed my thinking on that. And I have one question, just a process question. You had said that you had, you wanted to include some more information about the RFP process. And so if we were going to approve this document tonight, how could we get more information about the RFP process in there so that you can get it out?
I think, yeah, that's a great question. I think it's a good question. I'm thinking about if there was a way. So there's a Q and A period between, well, between the qualifications being issued, the RFQ being issued and the qualifications being received. And when those questions come in, inevitably there will be questions. We then have the opportunity, we gather the questions and we post all the results. So that again, from an equity perspective, everybody sees what everybody else asked and everybody's getting the same information. That could be a place where we add it. Given that I don't want to make too many revisions to this as is today, this conversation will be on the record. So anybody who's following this process, who might be interested in submitting a quals could be watching this video and see, you know, this conversation, okay, there might be some public process. So what we may do is as a subcommittee, make that recommendation about how we phrase that and that we don't bind ourselves to anything until we're issuing the RFP, but make sure that there's language that we put out to the community, maybe in a Q and A format to let them know. It's more of like a, you will find out in the actual RFP process that there will be a component where the public is being asked to provide you with further questions.
Ben, did you? I noticed your handle kind of one time.
Yeah, that's all right. Just a couple of things I wanted to say. One about the dollar, I really appreciate that. And, you know, I do think about the, the example of Berry and then really communities across state using the $1 thing that it sends a signal of, we are going to partner with you in a way that I think asking, you know, to try and recoup the cost doesn't send the same signal. And I just think about the M and M beverage lot that we've tried twice now and had a failed RFP process. And the years that that's now taken, if we think about what that site would have been, if it had been completely built out, what the tax revenue would have been, but, you know, it, it feels like, as Adrian said earlier, it's, it's the math, right? And that reminded me too of like, I think it's super important to just remember where we are in this process. Like what we're doing right now is inviting people to share ideas with us, right? And then each one of those ideas will need really robust financial analysis to see, does it, is it enough, right? Does it pay for, will it cut cash flow, the infrastructure? Will it increase our tax base? Will it be a drain on city services? Or, you know, is it a catalyst to create other development? And it's so, I, I feel like part of the challenge that we've had as a community around this conversation is people saying, making lots of assumptions about what's actually going to be built, when in fact, we, we don't know. We have to ask people, what do you want to build? And then we can really probe them to make sure that it, it fits our, our values. And then just one last thing, Pailin, I really do care about the idea of the, the $1 thing. And I'm thinking back to the Vermont Futures thing that we went to. And we were both in that presentation from Summit Properties, who has done the project. Summit Properties who has done the project in Millbury, I think you maybe saw Sal. Uh, you know, he was joking, but not joking about instead of them responding to RFPs anymore, developers are joking about putting out their own RFPs. Right? Saying this is what it would take for us to work with your community, right? Like that's the environment that we're 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 kind of in. Right? And so I think everything we can do, both through the actual incentives, but frankly, more even as a community to be inviting to say, we want to partner uh is really really important.
Thanks, Ben. Sal and then Adrian.
Well, I just, um, I I I wanted to confer there. I, you know, uh, it's, it's sort of a shock for your, to see we'll sell 20 acres for a dollar, but we're we're trading a um an immediate uh expense for a long-term investment of considerable revenue. Uh, I mean, i- if we, if we do a TIF or a chip, um, we we not only over a period of time, 20 years, we we pay for the infrastructure uh via the tax base and and then we we have, um, if it, if it all, if the development works, we have tax revenue uh ad infinitum. But we also provide housing, I mean, which we desperately need, which is the vitality of the community. Um, and 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 will nourish economic development, which is the other arm of what we're trying to develop. So it's um, all of these incentives are are designed to make it uh as favorable as possible, particularly at this early stage where we're trying to attract in our funnel as many developers as we possibly can. I hope we get multiple developers um who take a look at it. And then we'll have an opportunity to really pick and poke at what they propose. Um, and I I expect, you know, there'll be some give and take, but uh at least we'll have something to look at, something that the community can look at and talk about and discuss. And and there's a back and forth that's going to occur. As as Stephanie mentioned, this is the first step, one of one of many. Um, I'm also wondering, Stephanie, if I know the, you know, developers are, they're all builders, they they work with builders all the time who are, they're all accustomed to getting addenda to contract documents. So we could issue it as an addendum.
Yeah, we could. But I mean, because of the walls process, it's not as
Yeah.
highly restrictive or or prescriptive. Um, and I want to point out too, it could be beyond just one developer. It's it's what's nice about these things is people usually team up. So you see teams of of professionals and and investor, you know, I say investor, but you know, you're thinking of somebody who does the building as the investor, you know, a down street is an investor, a summit is an investor in their own projects. And so you you see teams come together with different ideas. And so we're hoping that's what we see, you know, a really you know, robust team with some interesting um players coming to the table like we've seen in some of the other communities.
Thanks, Adrian. And then Pailin.
Um, so I think when, you know, working through this subcommittee, um, just going through this process and going through the timeline, I think it's important to point out what the timeline is. So you know, when we have the RFQ, whenever it's submitted, as, you know, just to reiterate, reiterate what Stephanie said, there is, when we get the RFQs, the subcommittee will have time to review that. And so it will be, you know, I think, I think our subcommittee is really smart. We have really smart people on it and we're not gonna, I mean, we're not going to do anything that's bad for the community. So if it is not financially feasible, if it is a terrible design with super crappy houses, like it's just something that I don't think we're going to do, right? So we have options. We have options to, you know, say no. Um, we have options to say yes, but, you know, we're also looking at, you know, there's some, once again, there's super duper smart people in Montpelier looking at some financial models and you know, really trying to determine what what the definition of affordability is here in Montpelier for buying houses and how will we get, what would that money look like in return for Montpelier if we do the TIF tip like Sal just said, right? So we don't want to put our city in any type of financial distress. So if we get these, you know, RFQs and they go to RFP and it's not financially feasible for our community, I'm pretty sure we're we're not going to do it. And so I think that is also an option, right? So there's an option to build. There's options to work with developers, build relationships. But I think we've also built this as an option to, maybe it's just not financially feasible right now. I mean, that would be terrible, right? Because we all want housing, but I think we also need to be very real that the housing costs are astronomical and to attract a partner um to to work with us, we want to make it as attractive as possible. And while being responsible, you know, I think fiscally responsible um to the future of our city is is our number one goal while working to get housing. So I think there are off ramps built into this. There are deadlines built into this. There are so many loops and checks and balances that this is the first of many steps that and, you know, we built into this process, as Stephanie said, there is going to be public input. I think this is our opportunity to have that transparency, right? So to have the time to share these, you know, ideas and proposals and have our community to respond to to something, right? Like, we're not responding to anything right now except assumptions. So I would encourage us to think through this and and work through it. And if we get proposals that are amazing, let's share them with our community. Let's run the financials. Let's see if it makes sense. Let's get that input. If it doesn't make sense, then we'll make that decision at that point. But right now, this is so low risk. Um, but I think a very big return for us. That's how I would, I would phrase this. It's doesn't really cost us anything right now and we're not committing to anything.
Thanks, Adrian. Great points. Pailin?
Yeah, thank you for all the explanations and uh why we decided to have a subcommittee. So they can just like talk about the details and do all the calculations and they can come up with a a good plan for our community. So um, I am okay with the explanations. I am okay with the incentives. The only thing, uh, because we read, we attend this meeting, so we know why it is needed, why there's not that much risk. But most of the committee members, maybe they don't know, is there any way uh after deciding to approve or not this uh um document, we can just like create some kind of public information document like, oh, this incentive is done, the rationale is this. So just to show them that this is good for our community in the long run. It might be, oh, my God, now.
Yeah.
But oh, yeah, the rationale is behind this. Yeah, now I understand. So I will be very happy if we can have some kind of, it doesn't have to be long, kind of short, brief, and we can uh post it in the City Managers Weekly Report and from Watch Forum or even in our websites when the Counter Club Road Project is there. And then whenever people ask questions, we can always refer that document and we can also explain uh these incentives in a better way.
You should be on the subcommittee. Communication. What that suggests to me is, um, and it's basically an FAQ. And could we create it as a living document too, where we keep adding to, when you hear things from your constituents um to Adrian's point about like the math, that would be a good way to then translate some of what you were talking about and build out some of those, some of those FAQs, because they'll be helpful for your residents. They'll be helpful for developers. Like, there's no, so that's the part of the communications plan. We really need
But I can give an example before coming to this meeting. My husband got very angry with this one dollar. And I have to convince him, but he was still like 50 50. But if I have something like, he's an academician, right? He looks at the data and so I will be very confident. If I cannot convince my family, how I can explain to this, like, uh, my numbers or like
Well, I have one other way to describe it too. I just want to put this out there that, um, when you're selling your house, you're going to sell it at market value. And when you sell it, you walk away from it. You don't have any involvement, how they're going to do anything with your house after you leave it. We're asking them to enter a development agreement with us. We're asking them to meet all of these other standards. And so in order to do that, you know, that's one of the reasons we're incentivizing this. And we're not just selling it and saying, bye, do whatever you want forevermore. Like, we have these, we have this, we have this process that they're going to have to go through. And so when I think about that, and I think about, I have to buy a house and I have to pay all this, you know, mark market rate for, and then they still get to tell me what I get to do there or not. That feels very different. So that's the difference, I think, versus a, you know, you have a, a commercial property, has a commercial value and you just sell it and you're gone. This is a municipal, public, private partnership, and that's what's the biggest difference.
Thanks. That's, that's great. Um, I, I, I am very encouraged to hear the tone of tonight's conversation. I think that you know, what we're talking about here and and part of the plan of this whole thing is that the Montpelier does have some opportunities here. We do have the op, the ability to be optimistic and to adopt, take the next step for a vision, you know, toward a vision for the future. It will expand our community, will bring families in, it'll put kids in our schools, it will uh meet the needs of workers who can't afford to uh buy or even rent in our current market. And and all we have to do is keep our head down, keep working on on doing this and that everything about this is a step towards what we thought, what we said we were going to do when we asked the voters to agree to buy the property. It, a step toward what the voters said they wanted us to do when they said, yes, buy this property. And and so I think this is very, very encouraging. You know, when uh we know, one of the things that I think is important is that this doesn't lock us into anything. We're not out there in the community right now, there's at least one architect who's been uh coming to us with her own vision for what the, what could be on the property. There's this competition that's going on where other people are uh providing their visions for what could happen on the property. There's nothing that stops any of those people from saying, this is how I I want to develop this property because any of those visions could be the vision that really works for the city of Montpelier. So I'll take uh some comments from the public now. Why don't you pull up, you, you're first. I know you told your name earlier and I forgot it. Sorry.
Can you carry it there?
You should, you need to be at the microphone because uh you're going out up over the airwaves.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Holly Fowler, Bliss Road, again, member of the Complete Streets Committee. And I'll try to be very brief. I just have a series of observations. They range from question to concern. And they are perhaps things that I don't understand well enough. I was able to attend one of the subcommittee meetings on behalf of the Complete Streets Committee, but a couple of thoughts. I don't think we should be using the terms community and city interchangeably because it's very clear in these documents that they are not the same. And so when we say that there's plenty of room still for the interpretation of what the community would like for this space, it's very clear in here that the city decision-making body is extremely limited. Uh, it specifically excludes the Development Board and other commissions, presumably also committees like the Complete Streets Committee, uh and limits it strictly to the Subcommittee and City Council. So I'd like to make that point. Uh, 1 million of the 3 million was specific for recreation. The request for qualifications is pretty housing development centric and not really, while it's mentioned in some places, not, does not really elaborate on what the developer's responsibility would be. There's a reference to the city's vision. I specifically asked about this in the subcommittee about which city vision this was referring to. Uh, and I don't think there's consensus. If there was consensus, we would not have ongoing work uh happening with Vision Montpelier that Adrian's been leading and others. Uh, when we talk about due diligence, I think it's important to talk about the net impact of development, not just the addition to the grand list, but what are the extended metrics that we gain as a community from this. Um, and I was happy to hear uh Councilor Doyle speak to what we might gain and what the net impact would be on services, et cetera. I think that's important. Um, development to date seems to be car-centric. We've clearly prioritized grant seeking that is car-centric over multimodal transportation. Just going to call that out because it came up first uh this evening. A question is, what is the process for selecting and inviting proposals from those not in the RFQ cycle? This was a specific request I made, given the short timeline of the RFQ to not limit it to only those able to respond in this short period. If there's interested parties before the full proposals are due, but that process is not defined and that will be confusing to those who participate in the RFQ to say, why would I participate in the RFQ if anyone can participate in the proposals and that's not clarified? I've already mentioned that that the city uh is specifically exclusive of the Development Review Board and other permitting boards. Most concerning is the selection criteria and how will the evaluation metrics be developed and what benchmarks will we be able to inform as part of that because there's no detail about that currently.
Thanks. And that's your feelings. Thank you. Mike, do you have a response to some of that? Specifically, the Development Review part of it?
Yeah, Mike Miller, um, Planning Department. So I I jotted down a few of the notes. So the D, DRB will still be involved. Uh, this, there's no exclusion of permitting. Um, the DRB is not involved because to be involved at this stage would be what would they call ex parte communication? You can't, they can only wait until an application comes before them. So they really can't be involved in this step. But um, other, other committees can be. Uh, there was comment on on recreation. So the land that's being sold, the 20 acres is exclusive of the 14, 16 acres that have been set aside for recreation. So there's of the 35 or so developable open acres, 16 of it has has been set aside for recreation. And the Rec Department and City Council has had the Turtle Island lease and other opportunities there. So uh certainly there's going to be communication about how these housing in rec areas interact and overlap, but uh they're not, the developer wouldn't be responsible for developing the recreation facilities in the recreation area. That will come about through our Rec Department. And I don't know if there was
I think that's it.
That was it.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Sir, anyone, you know, Hanif.
Uh, again, Hanif Nazarali Loomis Street, Montpelier. Um, I was interested to hear the justifications for the one dollar giveaway. Because I think like a lot of members of the public, I think, will be really shocked to hear that. Uh, I personally don't feel very convinced that the RFQ is the appropriate time to put a developer incentive as, you know, to address that barrier when you're already addressing the other barriers. And I would posit that you're really undermining the possibilities for competition and for leveraging some funds. With that, that land is not land like the, a parking lot in Barry that is not going to, uh, it's not an old building that is, you know, you'd want to give away for a dollar so that you incentivize someone. This is the buildable land, 20 acres. It's a real asset. That's why the city bought it. And I feel like we should leverage that. Let's ask at the request for qualifications stage, let's ask people to give them their, give us their concepts for what sort of housing they're putting on there. Let them do the numbers, Adrian. Let, let this process give us some of the numbers. What are they expecting in terms of the types of housing and the sort of the rate that they're expecting to sell was? I would have expect, I would expect that if we'll get a proposal that would say based on a one dollar, you know, uh, a granting of five acres for for one dollar for this parcel of land, we could give you this kind of housing. And another developer would would say for this parcel, which we're interested in, of five acres, we will give you 500,000 because we are going to put those houses, townhouses that will be worth 500,000 or more and don't necessarily need, they need part of the objective for a mixed housing, you know, mix of housing developments. So I leave you with the, you know, with a request that this is not the time to put in that incentive. request that this is not the time to put in that incentive. It's rather, it should come in the Q and A and prior to the request for proposals. And we should take this opportunity to hear from the developers what they'd be willing to play in, pay in their business plan. I'm asking for that because I don't see the city which put a million, 1 million out of the 3 million specifically to give us an alternative to rebuilding at the Barry Street Recreation Department. I don't see the city having a plan to find another million. So this is an opportunity, I think, to, to try to leverage some funds and put it, reinvest it in a building, a recreation building that is going to cost the city.
Thanks, Hanif.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that I could hear? Steve?
Steve Widdaker, Montpelier. The the idea of forfeiting the prerogative, the statutory responsibility of our city, of our planning commission and our citizens' engagement is really reckless and irresponsible that y'all are doing this. That we are supposed to define what we want built up there. We're not supposed to just pick and choose and contort whatever developers visions are. That's not the way Vermont's law is written for planning. And the fact that we left our plan of Country Club Road out of our city plan and we'll figure it out later and y'all went along with that is disgrace, shame on you, you know? That we, you cannot steal our land and our prerogative to plan what we want up there. That's our land. And we never granted you superior authority over statute to take that prerogative away from us. But I will relay some of what I gathered from watching all these Subcommittee meetings. The vetting process under the Developer First Strategy was intentionally structured to protect proprietary information submitted by competitors, leading to significant concerns about transparency and oversight. Developers are generally hesitant to disclose financial models, specific designs, and chosen project partners such as co-housing groups or nonprofits in public forums. Most of this is verbatim from Stephanie. Executive sessions, council members acknowledge that do just the sensitive and proprietary financial and design details, the review of RFPs and RFQs would be, occur, would occur in executive sessions. This is just not the way planning is done or allowed to be done. And we have not addressed the elephant in the room, which is the transportation bottleneck. There's, you're not going to get to build and you cannot promise these developers that they're going to get to build what they want up there if we haven't done a traffic study. We haven't addressed the brownfield, finished the site assessment or the remediation requirements. And without those, you're risking, and I've said this again and again, you're risking luring these developers in and then having this thing blow up in their face and having them not want to come back when we are ready. And this is, this is classic Montpelier MO is to basically lead people along our design, 2050 design for the Team Bridges one. Shell, that we're not interested. I, I hate to think what you're going to do to Adrian and, and Sandy Vitsum's, you know, work product. And so y'all are just being reckless and irresponsible. You're violating statute and you really ought to stop and pause and, and think about what you're doing. This is not the way to go about planning under Vermont law.
Thanks, Steve. Adrian, I see you have your hand up. I want to see if there's any other members of the public who want to be heard. Hanif, you've already spoken. No. Yeah, no, you've. Adrian, go ahead.
So I just want to respond. So we are still working on the Vision Montpelier. We're going to have, I think, between 15 and 20 submissions and we're presenting on November 12th. And once again, it is going to be ideas to share with the council and the community. I see this as a marriage and an opportunity as we get developers submitting their ideas. So we're getting a plethora of ideas. And it's from the community, it's from students, it's from architectural students at Norwich. It's from a whole variety of, of people that we've engaged, hundreds of folks in Montpelier over the past two months, sharing their ideas in, in lock and step, I think, with this, with the developers that will be sharing us their ideas, which will obviously be market-driven, right? So I think it's very important that we do, you know, explore that. We look at them, we absorb them, we see what people want in terms of a vision. And so I think it's very important to, you know, go through that process and, and look and see what people have submitted as, as ideas. And the other thing is, I just wanted to, you know, I really wanted to stop and pause and make sure that we have are fully vetted in terms of like exhausting the conversation around this $1 because I just want to make sure we're making the right decision. I'm looking at all the risks and opportunities and, you know, if, you know, what if we did just take it off of the RFQ? Is that horrible? Would that totally like mess the whole thing up? Like, I just want to make sure, like, I, I was on the Subcommittee. I felt like I was, it was good, but I, I'm listening to the public and getting messages that this is a terrible idea. So I just want to make sure I am very confident moving forward and if there are options A, B, and C that we can hear them and just make sure we're, like, I'm at least very confident in that before we move forward.
Stephanie, do you have something to say about that?
I have a few, few responses to a few of the things that were mentioned because they were good, good points. So one thing in particular, relative to taking the $1 out of the RFQ, it, it does diminish how many responses you're going to get because people don't know what are you going to end up charging for this property. It'd be like going to shop for houses without knowing any of the property prices, you know, without knowing for, you know, are you going to see a house that's out of your budget or not? And so when they're trying to understand how much it is, you know, and I, unless you're asking, okay, come to us with a proposed purchase price. Is anyone going to propose less, like more than a dollar? I mean, I, I, you know, they're going to make their numbers work and, and I'm telling you, and the Carrie, I think it was Carrie's point. I mean, you look around at all the developable areas that aren't, haven't been built and aren't being built. And that's because it's just the numbers aren't working. So it's not, you know, the people that we've got on our list are not these big fat cat developers trying to line their pockets. It's just trying to make the thing pencil out. And especially in a situation where we're asking, we're going to want bells and whistles. We're going to want it to be extra special here and not maybe something that would be easily, more easily, more cheaply produced. And so I think it, it would disadvantage you to take it out now and to put it in later and to leave it more left, left out. I also think that if you're thinking from an equity lens, when you, when you take out, when you put it at a dollar, you're opening it up to a lot of different types of partners, you know, who might have different ways of accessing funding. And so to the point that there may be ways of leveraging funding, if you, if you had a purchase price on there, I'm just not aware of those, those particular funding sources. The other point I wanted to make was about the, this was to some of Polly's points about the matrix and the decision-making. And I think the net impact is a really good point, like the way of talking about, we did talk about tax base. That was one of the things. But continuing from the master planning process that happened with the community in 2223 where we had a lot of robust engagements over, you know, several, several meetings, there were many different points of objectives. And so I do think that creating the matrix that we're going to create for the RFP process and, and to your point, Holly, that that does need to be put into the selection criteria that is developed during the RFP creation, which is the next step for the Subcommittee, has to be very clear about what that's, that selection criteria will be. And then that's what we, and we match that with the matrix that the Subcommittee then uses to evaluate the proposals in an apples-to-apples way. And that's where you can then try to look at things that are beyond just tax base and, and value created, but also what are the other types of, you know, community things that have been identified. And I do totally agree with the, the point about community versus city and city being, you know, maybe a specific terminology and entity. But, but it's very typical to write in that the city with the DRB and the Planning Commission are not involved in this stage of the process because there isn't something to respond to. So Mike covered that. I think those were all the things I wanted to process-wise.
Thanks, Stephanie. Peter, you've got your hand up and then I'll get back to council members.
Yeah, I, I would just like to make, Peter Kelman, I'd just like to make a suggestion that builds on something that Palin has talked about. And that is the critical importance of communicating very clearly and simply what the situation is, why you're proposing this, what the steps are, so that Palin can convince her husband. And so that when David Delkor writes the article for the Times Argus tomorrow or the next day, that gets it all wrong or some of it wrong, that you will have communicated clearly what is going on here. I've listened to so many different people speaking with partial understandings, with misunderstandings, with not knowing, not having been at those meetings. Carrie, I think, made a good point. She was at many of those meetings. It helped her understand things, but most of the public cannot go to those meetings. There's got to be better, clearer communication. Think about what happened with the garage. We would have that garage today. We would have a civic center today, a convention center if, if the city had communicated more clearly why that was critically important for the economic health of Montpelier. It wasn't done and so moneyed interests, you know, you know, convinced people that this was a horrible idea. So I, I plead with you. Kelly and, and you know, to work out a communication plan right away. Get out there before that Times Argus article hits. And it's got to be more than just in front porch forum.
Thanks, Peter. Palin and then Ben. Ben, did you have your hand up too? Okay, go ahead.
So I, I just want to ask the, ask a similar thing. How much flexibility do you have, Stefan, in terms of timeline? To give us maybe a couple of the days, have a press release? I don't know, like, again, some kind of communication then we can share with the public. So because we just, the incident recently, I don't want to end up with the same situation because everybody talked about transparency, communication trust. So yeah, everybody heard the discussion will understand that. I don't know the result of the vote, but there is a tendency to say yes to this, Stefan, but how much time we can get from you to communicate with the community members in a good way then when everybody knows. Still, some people who say still know, but again, I've just explained the rationale and why it is really necessary in the long run.
Let me just make sure I understand the question. It, it would be if the council approved the document as is, but don't release it until you've had a chance to do more communication? Or are you saying to hold the vote, hold the decision-making before? To do more information and then make the decision?
I was trying to learn the answer for this. Do we have any flexibility this? Or no, we have to do this tonight because timeline doesn't allow us to look at other questions?
Right. The, I mean, the factual answer is that if you move it this, this timeline in, it just shifts. So it'll all shift by, if it's a two week until your next meeting, basically everything will have to shift. I wouldn't truncate any of the periods that are in here because those were specifically intentionally created to give the development community enough time to receive it, enough time to put their materials together. So you can't, you could, you could wait two more weeks and then everything gets moved two weeks. You can't necessarily just take two weeks out of one of those steps. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so maybe less than two weeks, but like two days, like three days. I just want to be sure that we are not sharing our decision with the community members. We are communicating with them about our possible decision. I think there is a little bit of difference.
I've heard of the council on that, yeah.
Discussion for, for us.
Yeah.
Paul Carnell.
Hi, thank you for, for recognizing me. I just had a couple of comments. The first one is that I think the, one of the reasons why it's so hard to, to swallow the $1 sale amount is that it was never brought up in the beginning that this was going to be a, a strategy of ours. And the other thing that I find very surprising is the the comments that I've read that this is a very difficult piece of property to develop. Once again, when we were voting on this, it was never said, this is a difficult property. In fact, it was sort of presented as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. It was going to be a great thing. And I think we didn't, we didn't understand the, the challenges in front of us at all. I would also, I, I'm comforted to hear Adrian's comments that we're not committing to, to anything that we can't get out of. I, and that we're not, you know, that if it's a crappy design that we can, we can say no to it. I'll just point out that once we go down the road very far, it's going to be very hard to say no to a crappy design. And Peter Kelman brought up the, the parking garage issue. He brought it up. I, I have a completely different interpretation than him on where the moneyed interests were in that whole, in that whole debacle. I think you just have to look at who is making the proposal and you'll see. But once it got to a certain point, the people dug in, the developers dug in their heels and there was no way to get around what many people saw as a crappy design. It was their way or the highway. And so I think you're going to have to have a lot of fortitude to say no to a design that the, the community doesn't, doesn't want. And I just hope that you are entering this with your, your eyes wide open. That you are committing to, you eventually, you're going down the road to commit to a developer and it's going to be very hard to say no once they and you spend a lot of time on it.
Thanks, Paul. Speaking of the crappy design question, I, I raised a question with Stephanie about what possible ideas are qualified to be considered, what would be excluded as a crappy design. If someone wanted to come to us and say, my plan is I'll pay you back the $3 million that you paid for this land and I will build three $1 million homes on that land. I would consider that objectively a terrible design, but that is something that someone could bring to us and and have it be considered. And I hope we would reject it without giving it 30 seconds thought, but but that's one of the things that could happen. And, and so I think we're at, we're at the beginning of the process. We're not, we're not hoping to get crappy design. We're looking for good designs.
Yeah, I just had a couple, one more question for Stephanie and then a comment. Stephanie, I'm just, you know, going back to the dollar, you know, just put my cards on the table. And I think we need to do that because I think it sends a signal that we're for real. I just, I just feel that way. And I'm wondering if you can talk about other examples that you've seen in Vermont of what communities are doing for incentives? Because if I'm remembering correctly, there are places like Dorset's providing some pretty exceptional incentives beyond the $1 thing. And I'm also thinking about, again, the Middlebury Project. So I'm wondering, to the degree that you're familiar with just different examples around the state of like, or if anybody else is of like, you know, there's the $1 incentive, but then what are some other ones that, you know, that we're not all?
Good question. You know, I think there are, they are unique to the community. It sometimes doesn't matter what the property is. It sometimes matters. You know, what they have at their disposal or where the property is, for example. But, you know, there are, I'm trying to come up with others on the top of my head, and there's not much that, that, again, that you could do here that's similar. But you know, in other communities, they're putting in, they're, they're actually structuring, they're helping restructure leases, for example. Did they put this out in the RFQ? I can't remember exactly. But when they got into the public-private partnership development, one of the barriers that they had was how to fill the space, fill commercial space, for example. Now, that's not an issue out here, but something that we have, you know, experienced in around the state is that commercial space is less viable right now. We don't have a lot of commercial demand. We got housing demand, but you want that first floor activated, for example. So having the municipality act as a partner in securing or even subsidizing sometimes the lease that goes into that property. So having the municipality act as a partner in securing or even subsidizing sometimes the lease that goes into that property. In order to make it a viable project. And sometimes that doesn't come out until the developer asks for it. So there are possibly incentives we want to add that they bring to us that they say, well, could you do this with us? You know, if you did this, this would, this would really help. And that's what was done. Now it was done a little bit differently in the city of Rutland, but you know, this, this hotel that's going to be built there now. After 50 years of being a decrepit, you know, single, um, parking lot. But an old parking lot that has a bunch of brownfields, um, contamination underneath, $5 million worth. They asked for a whole laundry list and they bought that property at market rate. They brought, bought it in the market. That wasn't a city property, but then they came to the city and said, how can you help us? Cause we have this gap we cannot close. And so they put in TIF, they put in tax stabilization. They helped partner to do the sales tax reallocation. They waived sewer fees. They did a part, they, um. Worked with BPW to help, uh, with parklets and, and to get park, um, space and to help close streets from time to time to be able to allow construction. Cause it's a tight building site, like the list went on and on in this development agreement because the city is all in on getting housing unit and hotel in their downtown. So there are different ways for different communities.
Yeah. And thanks. That just is a segue to the second thing that I wanted to say. And it highly kind of goes back to your point about the distinction between the community and the city. And like the city council ultimately, right, is the, with the decision-making authority on the, right? And that, that needs to be clear. I think it's incumbent upon us to take input from the different people in the community to inform our decision. But I would also say that the reality is while we might have the decision-making authority on a proposal, if we get one. The community has the power here in terms of creating the authorizing environment for things to happen. And I think about Rutland, you know, they just had that, the TIF vote recently that it passed 80% of the public voted for that. Because they knew how important it was to move forward. And, you know, they have set ambitious housing goals of like hundreds of units a year. And they're doing what it takes to make it happen. And I, you know, they're an example, but they're also the competition. Right? Um, and I just think it's. I don't know. That's honestly been the thing I've been struggling with this whole thing. It's like, we can have this RFP and like, we can all vote for it tonight and put in the incentives and it'll be great. Ultimately, it's going to come down to the authorizing environment of this community of whether or not they choose to move forward with housing or not.
Having heard that, Ben, I would like to invite somebody to make a motion. We continue the discussion, but I think we're at the point, you, we've gone, you've digested everything in this. Is someone ready to make a motion to approve this?
I will move that we approve the, uh, RFQ prepared by, um, Whitenburg with, under the guidance of the subcommittee. And, um, follow the schedule distributed. To potential developers.
Adrian, are you jumping out of your seat there?
Yes, I am. I was going to make a motion. So I would like to amend Sal's motion.
Well, let's, let's hold off. We don't have the sales motion yet.
I'll second Sal's motion.
Okay. Now you want to move to amend Sal's motion.
I would like to make a friendly amendment to slightly adjust the timeline to release the RFQ. On Monday, October 27th. To hopefully allow the city a little bit of time to. Put out a press release or share some communication before it's sent out to the developers. And to ensure that the CAD files are in the RFQ.
The 27th. Sal, does that work for you to accept that? Or do we need to vote on that? Either way is fine.
Well, I, I, we, I think we need to discuss it really. I mean, we. This was a very compressed schedule. The subcommittee's schedule was, was compressed and eight o'clock in the morning happened to be the time when we could all get together. In pairs of days, you know, we worked two mornings, one after the other for three weeks. Because we, we want to meet the deadline for the, um, disaster relief grants. With a list of, of submissions. I mean, that, that's been driving the process. Mike, what are you?
Mike. Thanks for flagging that.
Yeah. And so on, on the, the DR disaster recovery, so community development block grant disaster recovery. The initial timeline that had been laid out for the second round was to be in December and February. So it'd be an application, pre-application in December going into February. So we were trying to get into that window. Uh, our communication with the state is that they are going to have a second round. But it is going to be pushed out, uh, between 30 and 60 days. They haven't made their decision as to when, what their timing is going to be. They want to finish reviewing the current application and see where they're at, but. If you needed a couple more days and it had to push a schedule a couple more days. It's not going to hurt our timeline with respect to the DR green.
Okay. So that schedule has officially been pushed.
It's, uh, what has happened is it's been officially removed from the website. So the, so the December 16th submission for the second round has been removed. They have not put anything new in, but we have been in meetings where we have talked to the people who've said. This is what we're talking about. This is where we expect this new timing to be. And it'll be released when it's released, but we know it's going to be at least be pushed about 30 days.
Folks, are we?
So three days, um, what is that due to?
I think we're okay.
That moves our issuing of, of, of requests for proposals for, for three, for those three days. December 11th to the 14th.
How, um, correct, right? How, um, specific do we need to get with these dates for? Purpose of like, I mean, I can go through and shift everything by three days, basically, sort of. You don't necessarily need to shift the information and site visit, which is the second line on this or the queue, the questions. Cause three days, that's not a big deal. Um, so I would shift these other ones. Do you need that in the motion?
So maybe the motion should be to approve the, uh, RFQ and have you, uh. Set up the, uh, the timeline to start on the 27th.
Adjust accordingly, leaving the site visit on the sixth, then the questions due by the 10th.
Does that work for everybody?
So we'll accept the amendment, uh, if it's worded in that. Will you accept the amendment to the amendment? Uh, will you accept that wording in your amendment that we, we changed the release date to the 27th?
We should say it out loud. Very specific.
That's the date you mentioned, actually. You said.
October 27th.
October 27th instead of October 23rd.
Yes.
Release date for the RFQ.
And have Stephanie create your adjusted schedule to reflect that.
And I just want to point out, it may not shift exactly three days on everything because there's weekends and there's holidays. Coming into the holiday season. So it would be adjusted accordingly. I think is the important word within the same timeframes.
Folks, are we ready to vote?
Just one quick question is that we're doing all of this, but does the city have the capacity to put in the communication? You know, to take that time to write, like we're shifting everything around here on the sense that like, they're going to put together a communication thing and put it out. Thank you.
Carrie.
We're voting on, on that.
Right. Well.
No, it was a.
It was accepted by the mover. Yeah.
Without objection. So.
So it's, I'll move the RFQ and have Stephanie set up the timeline to start on the 27th. Yeah, I think that's clear enough. Is that clear enough for everybody?
We need to authorize the, or direct the city manager to issue the RFQ, the RFQ.
Yeah. Is that, is that what you think?
Yes, they are subcommittee. Is this, is that a motion or not? Subcommittee scope?
Let's do.
I'll let you do that.
Yeah.
Don't want to forget it.
So we'll have a motion about the subcommittee.
Yeah. So what are, can we just, sorry, John, can we hear it one more time?
To approve the RFQ and have Stephanie set up the timeline to start on the 27th.
And that's a separate thing from.
And have, and have the city.
Oh, and have the.
Issue it on the, issue it or. Whatever one does, release it on the 27th. Do whatever someone does to it. Right. Carrie.
Can I offer a friendly amendment that specifically says authorize the city manager to issue the RFQ? I'm just going by the, the language that was in the memo that we got from the managers.
Great. All right. Uh, do a roll call. Helen?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sal? Carrie?
Yes.
Jim? Adrian?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, folks. Now, a motion about the, uh. Subcommittee.
Yeah, I, I believe I understand what we're doing. Like, uh, I, I would move that the subcommittee continue to meet as needed. And publicly warned in meetings to discuss communication strategies and additional support as needed.
Yeah, additional support during the RFQ and RFP development stage.
Is there a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Great folks, great work. It's now time for, it's 8:50. It's now time for an 8:30 break. And so let's, let's come back at nine o'clock or thereabouts. You?
Hi, I'm Sarah La Croix, the finance director, and I'm here with Kurt Monica, the public works director. And we are on our third budget workshop. We were going to take you through the water and sewer funds. And I think the most exciting part of this budget workshop is that you're going to get to hear from Kurt more than me. And so I think you should enjoy. So as we move through, we'll just take a quick general review of the fund types that are enterprise for these two funds. And then we'll take you through the water fund and sewer funds, budgets, related master plans. And then, um, unique items related to each of those funds. And we're happy to take questions throughout or questions at the end, whatever works best for all of you. And so here, just to start, um, you've seen this slide before in a couple of different presentations. But the highlight is the water and sewer funds are enterprise funds and they are operated like a business as opposed to generated by taxes. And the biggest takeaway here is that these are both operating and capital budgets in one. And the charges for services that fund these are the water usage fees and the sewer usage fees along with, um, leachate and septicage receiving. As well as different state and federal grants. And so. Can see a common theme here as this is really a, a charge for service versus taxpayer driven, um, funding. And so the water fund, the water fund accounts for all revenues and expenses related to our water system. As I said, it's self-supporting and it's to cover the full cost of providing safe, reliable water service and maintaining our water infrastructure. And so I'm going to take you through, uh, the budget and I'll let Kurt take you through the master plan. This is a snip you've seen before of the FY26 budget that breaks out, um, the budget total by the sources of revenue. As well as the different expense categories. You can see our biggest expense categories in the water fund are related to the distribution system. Supply and treatment and administration. Uh, and so here, just a, a quick look at water revenue, you can see year over year, starting in FY20. And you can see we take a bit of a dip in water revenue, uh, during the COVID days, and then it starts to return to normal. You'll see an anomaly in 25 and that's related to ARPA funded projects and how they need to be, uh, recorded from a governmental accounting. Purposes. And then 26, you see right in line as we see the rates increasing. We've been increasing the rates in these funds and the budgets by CPI plus one, uh, which is something I'll explain in a few minutes. And so here for the expenditures, I gave a, a couple of different graphics of the expenses that, um, were budgeted and actuals year over year. Uh, and you can see them broken down by their different categories that I referenced on that previous slide. And, and obviously the water filtration, um, category being the largest category here. And so, uh, as you can see, the expenses, um, are pretty steady over the years. As we, uh, work to fund day-to-day operations and invest in capital. And, and debt service in the water fund is another important topic. And you can see here, I provided a graphical representation along with a, a snip of the, the debt that goes into, um, the water fund. And you can see in 2025, the water plant debt was the last year we played, paid for that water plant debt. And you see the big dip in 26. What you see return then is one-third of the East State Street Phase One project. And so that kind of offset some of that delta from, from that, um, debt dropping off related to the plant. Which is what was expected as we move on these big waterline projects is they will be picked up and replaced with different debt. But the, there's been a lot of conversation and inquiry about the water treatment plant debt. And so that is officially off of our books now and it won't be part of the budgets moving forward. So I just thought that was important to reference and you can see the different, um, debt in here.
Do we have a mortgage burning party?
You know, unfortunately, uh, debt for me, we take on a lot of new debts every time one drops off, I'm replacing it with another. So it's not, not as exciting when one gets paid down.
So what was the term on that? Like, what was the length of the?
I believe it was a 20 year. Um, so here, um, is another graphical representation that I've mentioned before. It's really important to budget for the greater of, um, debt or depreciation. And, and part of that here is we are budgeting for debt. We're also factoring in depreciation. And then, uh, we've also been investing in capital. And you can see in the blue, uh, portion of this, these graph bars, and that's the investment in capital. And in the water and sewer master plans, uh, we said we would invest 1% per year into capital. And so we are at about 9% additional funding that is dedicated to capital within each of these funds each year. And so while, um, some years it may fall off because there are big projects in the work. We are still ensuring that we are doing at least that amount of 9% of the budget is an investment in capital. And so I, I believe in FY27, we'll be looking at 10% um, in, in both funds, um, being attributed to capital improvements in our infrastructure. So next I'll let Kurt take you through the master plan.
And so the master plan was urgently developed in 2016. This was in response to, um, really a number of water leaks that we're having. And, um, and our frankability to have enough capital to replace water lines at an acceptable rate. So this takes into account the water and sewer benefit charges, which is actually, um, uh, a fee on the tax rate. But it's base, it's justification is really on the water side is that everyone benefits from fire protection. So the municipal, um, properties are protected, which everyone has the best vested interest in. So the schools, city hall, all the public buildings, um, everybody benefits from fire protection on that side. So we use those benefit charges. So there's, um, uh, I think nine cents total. And we can, um, move those annually to, to either their water fund or the sewer fund, uh, by resolution approved by council. To sort of fill the gaps off a year. But we have a big project in water. We can move some of the benefit charge to water fund and vice versa to the sewer side. Um, but the basis of the plan is like Sarah said, um, we increase rates by CPI. And that just covers our operating costs changes annually. And then we add 1% specifically for infrastructure. And that 1% is compounded annually because it's 1% on the 1% that was added the previous year and so on and so forth. So, uh, over time that becomes, you know, a significant amount of capital investment that we can make into our, our infrastructure on the water side, um, in this case. Our goal is to update this every five years. So, uh, in '21, this was updated. Next year due for another update. Things are continually changing. We have a new water permit that, um, that has sort of changed the focus on, on the master plan. So our old water permit, um, really required the city to focus on areas with low pressures. Hopefully open to hydrant and the pressure dropped. That's, um, a violation of water's law rule. So we're mandated to focus on those areas. Our new permit, um, requires us to replace the areas that have the most water breaks, which is great. That's so, that's what staff wants as well. So we're really, um, focusing on replacing lines where we have a lot of breaks, particularly areas with, um. High frequency of boil water notices. That's viewed as a, a public health hazard by the state. Um, so, um, that's really what we're focusing on our, our replacement areas on. Uh, this plan is really comprehensive where we looked at, um, not just water pipes. We're looking at depreciation of a plant. We're looking at, uh, water meter replacement funding. And so we tried to capture, um, every aspect of the water fund and make sure that we had funding included. Uh, within the plan to cut, to cover the replacement of all of those items. And so from the master plan, after our recent permit, um. I'll just step back for a second and talk about, um. The recent work that we've done, uh, studying the water system. So ahead of our permit, when it was going to get renewed in 2023, um, the state, uh, asked us to do, um. An engineering study on the water system to look at what is the best way to, uh, deal with the high frequency of breaks in the city? Is that reducing the pressure throughout the system? Is it replacing the pipes? Really the two primary areas that we looked at. And, um, you know, looking at the impacts of breaks, it wasn't just. And, um, you know, looking at the impacts of breaks, it wasn't just the costs of repairs, it was also, um, the impacts to private properties, private and commercial residential properties that are impacted sometimes by water breaks, um, whether it's a pressure reducer in the house that fails, or, uh, a line inside in a private household or commercial lines that break inside buildings. Well, all those factors were looked at, um, and then the costs of, um, adding pressure-reducing valves, for the pressure reduction side, um, which requires then water booster stations to boost the pressure back up, because Montclair is essentially hills and valleys, so, pressure's real low at the high, high points, and very high down in the downtown. Uh, and if you drop that in the downtown, you've got to boost it back up on the other side to get up, um, to maintain service. Uh, so we looked at, um, the operating costs associated with adding those pump stations, the lifecycle costs, you have to replace some, you know, pumps every at least forty years, uh, at the, at the longest, um. And so all those factors are put in, and, uh, and what we found is really that, um, replacing the pipes is the best way, uh, to reduce the frequency of breaks. Um, and then from that PER, all the highest frequency areas where we had breaks was identified, and those are shown in red here. Um, this plan identifies which pipe we're gonna place and which year, and all of the funding, um, for these pipeline replacements is tied to the master plan, uh, including the bond dates, so, um, East State Street is the first bond, that's showing them yellow on the right. And then that bond payment is factored in, um, uh, to the capital within the plan moving forward, so they factored in those bond payments, and still have a capital to replace pipes while we're paying down that debt. Uh, so this plan allows us to replace, um, the worst, the ten worst streets, the most frequent breaks within a ten-year period. And the green cells are projects that we do announce, which we can do with our own public work stat, with our own engineering division, um, for really about ten percent of a contracted cost, so there's a, a huge savings there. Yeah, that's it for that. And then, uh, just thought it would be useful to look at, uh, historically how many breaks we have annually. Um, so two thousand sixteen is when the master plan was started, and you can see that, um, there's been a trend downward on the number of breaks we've had each year, um, until this year, and there's reasons why, um, we had a, an uptick in breaks um, in two, uh, twenty twenty-five. I think the biggest one is that we were rebuilding the Terra Street pump station, um. That was the first time that pump station was rebuilt in approximately four years. But we have to maintain service, so you pull one pump off, have it rebuilt, put that one back on, and then do these, the second, uh, pump. But what we found is when we pulled the first pump off, that when, um, those pumps would come on and off, having the, the plated side where the old, the removed pump was, um, it restricted the water from being able to go back into the system. So that was sort of like a natural pressure relief to go through the pump and back into the system, so it, it ended up causing pressure spikes when we pulled that, and, uh, we corrected it through programming, extending the pump runtimes and things. Um, but it did cause some pressure spikes and did cause some leaks, but we, and we also had, um, a hydrant failure at the public works garage. That's where we felt all our bulk water, we sell bulk water to haulers, and, um, that failed rather suddenly, and that caused three or four leaks, with a big pressure spike. Um, and then the third con- uh, contributor to that high spike is, um, sprinkler, sprinkler malfunctions in the downtown and commercial buildings. All those hammer on and off, again, I get pressure spikes, a thousand weights. So my, um, I expect that next year we'll see continued downward trend this year with an anomaly. And then similar, um, the cost of repairs, so we took our work orders, um, comb through, uh, filtered out all of the, um, costs related to water leak repairs. Um, and again, you can see that there is a downward trend and how much we're paying annually. Well, to me, this really is a telling sign that our plan is working, we're dropping leaks, we're dropping costs and repairs. And, uh, this also includes, um, the cost of paving, you know, everything related to the water leak, not just the repair itself. The one thing is that is not in here is contracted, uh, repair costs. Um, which I just frankly didn't have time to pull all that together, but, um, we certainly can get that for a future discussion. And then, uh, this sheet shows all of the work that we've done since the master plan was adapted, uh, adopted. So there are goals within the master plan of how many feet per year of water and sewer we would like to replace. And then, um, this is a representation of the actual number of feet that we have replaced. Um, one thing on the sewer side is that sewer, uh, CSO projects are not reflected in sewer replacement lengths. Of the last two really big projects that we've done on State Street, where, um, there's a lot of storm work, but it's paid for through the sewer fund. And that's to take the storm water, uh, out of the sewer to reduce, um, overflow to the river during heavy rain events. Um, so, um, to summarize, the, the bottom line is that we are a little bit behind our goals. Um, and there's a number of, uh, reasons for that. Uh, the biggest ones is the pandemic, during the pandemic, we were required to shut all construction down. Um, so we lost a year, uh, during that time, also put a lot of time into the wastewater plant and investment. Uh, one, uh, one really major upgrade is sixteen point five million, uh, and we have another one in the queue. In twenty twenty-one, um, we worked through a development agreement and, um, accepted the Murray Hill Private Water System. And, and took that over, we, um, added, um, a small booster station as well as a, a lot of, um, fair amount of distribution, but also added a lot of users and another fifty thousand dollars a year revenue. Um, we've also increased permitting challenges, so there's new urban soil rules, and that really makes, um, adds cost to projects and, um, and reconstruction projects, so have increased stormwater permitting rules. The biggest of all of the factors that we were struggling with is engineering capacity. I've had a vacancy for three years. We finally filled it for six months, and, uh, very quickly that engineer found the higher-paying job. So, uh, one thing I'm, I'm gonna be looking at for the next budget cycle is to increase, um, uh, engineering rates so that we can be competitive with the private sector, where we can't do projects without internal engineers. We, we can hire a lot of work out for three times the cost, but, um, but we still need municipal managers who obtain the funding to do the public outreach, to make sure that we're doing projects right. Um, it's really important, the staffing piece, and, and that's, uh, like I said, the biggest obstacle that we're facing right now. Um, one other approach, um, on utility replacement is asset divestment. So there, um, there are dual water mains and sewer mains all over the city, and, uh, that's twice as much, um, pipes for us to maintain, twice as many to break. So, uh, one of our focuses has been on, um, as getting rid of those, um, dual pipe streets and reducing it to one bigger pipe that can handle all the, all the flows. School Street's a great example of that.
Do you just do that when we're also doing the paving for the road?
Um, a lot of times, uh, paving is faster and cheaper than utility work, so it's ahead of utilities, so, uh, CS sometimes. East State Street, yes, so, yeah, School Street, yes, and then Norfield Street, those are when we did full reconstruction projects. A lot of the in-house projects, we just patched the road and just did the, um, the utility, the water in particular. Um, but School Street is a great example of a, we had two pipes that were both breaking, uh, a couple winters ago, and, um, we just, we had, ended up having to do an emergency winter construction project to replace the worst of it. Um, and then we came back the next year to, to finish the project out, so that ended up, there was a, I think, an eight, and a four, we ended up putting a twelve-inch pipe that could handle everything and eliminating two old pipes that we were having a lot of problems with. Um, so it's a great way to reduce the total achievement of getting to steady state, you can reduce your total number of assets, the next time someone comes through and tries to replace these pipes, we're only dealing with one, and that's also challenges with shutdowns. Um, you know, because you're dealing with multiple sets of valves and they cross-connect, and it's just, it's a whole mess, so. That's kind of been our focus, we've done a lot of streets with dual water mains, and all the green highlighted pipes are areas that we've, um, gone from two piping systems to one. Um, and then the last piece on, um, on the sewer side is that we are, um, we have two sewer pump stations in design right now, those are the two that were flooded in twenty-three. Uh, the one at the roundabout, which will support the Country Club Road Development, is in, uh, preliminary design, about thirty percent right now. And then on Lower State Street, which is pump station one, um, our pump stations were built in nineteen sixty-two, well, well past their design life, and, um, and we just have to pack on to this point. Okay. So this photo is a pipe-off Ridge Street, and you can see that there's not much room inside the pipe anymore, um. This, that's called tuberculation, it's, uh, basically iron deposits that build up inside water mains. This happened when, before the water treatment plant was put in, and there was pH control. Well, basically, the water was a bit acidic, and it would, um, would leach out the iron, and then it would get caught and inside the pipe. Um, and so another argument for the pipe replacement strategy is that, um, if we were to reduce the pressure in this area, um, people would probably lose service, uh, in their upper floors of the house, because this opening on a six-inch pipe is probably maybe an inch at best. And when you drop the pressure, um, you're losing that velocity, and you're probably lose certain, so I, I just, I really do think, again, that we're following the right approach for a lot of reasons, and this, uh, kind of gives you a visual of one of those. Um, some of the things to highlight in the water fund, um, are propane tanks at the water plant have failed, uh, uh, four years ago. We've set up temporary, um, tanks to serve it, but at some point, we're gonna need to replace, uh, um, those tanks, and it's approximately half a million dollars. Um, the water plant is now twenty-five years old, um, there's, uh, uh, you know, upgrades that are gonna be needed. Uh, filters are run dramatically, so off-air, that really should be electric, there's efficiencies to begin there, and, um, and the roof is, you know, it's time for a replacement. Um, during the twenty-three, twenty-three flood, uh, the dam that controls the level, the Berlin Pond, failed. We did an emergency repair on it, we basically shorted up with rock, funded by FEMA. Um, but the state is gonna require us to rebuild it, they can't leave it like that, um. So it's approximately one point two million dollar project, and FEMA would not cover the whole replacement, only the temporary stabilization, because it wasn't in great condition pre-flood, it just got worse. Um, a lot of our, uh, water treatment staff are at retirement age, one, one of the long-term staff members has already retired. Um, so we implemented a, a transition plan, we have two, um, uh, junior and, um, operators up there now that are training, one just passed their test, or they're licensed or they're on track to get licensed, they pass the test, and then you need four years of experience to become licensed. Um, so, uh, just, there's something I was nervous about, is that we're gonna lose all our operators at the same time. We sort of have addressed that, uh, concern at this point with a good transition plan. Um, we're having problems with our meters, we're, um, we've got a lot of meters, or we had a lot of meters that were inoperable, for missing revenue there. Um, our staff at the garage have historically maintained meters. We, um, um, they were having a hard time hitting all the appointments to make repairs because of leaks and big things, and all their, uh, sort of emergency response things they have to do. So we actually shifted a staff member from the garage up to the water plant, um, and they have a much more structured schedule, so that's really resolved that. So, uh, it's been a good operational change, um, as I noted, that we'd rebuilt the Terra Street pump station in twenty twenty-five. Um, and then just a, a workload increase in two thousand sixteen, and this is part of the reason why water breaks are, um, really, uh, a, a lot of discussion around it, um, in the public, is that, uh, before two thousand sixteen, boil waters were really not. Um, they weren't done, like, unless it was an extreme event, the one time I remember pre-six, two thousand sixteen's when the whole city sort of drained when we had a break on Taylor Street. So, um, there's a lot more impact resonance now that we have to do with boil water, because when all they're waiting to be able to use their water again, and, um, people really know us a lot more, it's not just, it's off in the middle of the night. And it's on again in the morning, you've got to wait three days for us to test and get it cleared. So, um, it's just, it's a lot more impactful to, uh, water users. Um, another, uh, on the staffing study, they're talking about cross-departmental support. Um, because of the cuts in rec, our water plant is now, um, supporting pool operations from the weekends, they come in anyway, to do labs. So it seemed like a good fit, they know chemistry, water chemistry, but we've got to test pH and things at the pool. Um, so our, our plant staff are now doing that. And in twenty twenty-four, they won the best, um, tasting water award in Vermont, which is pretty exciting. Uh, so how do we go forward, how do we get out of the water leak issue beyond what we've already done and are doing? Um, what we're thinking is the next step is really look in the, the new technology of pipe bursting and lining, so. Uh, pipe bursting is pulling, um, a fuse pipe through an existing pipe and breaking it up, so it's bigger. And then you have the liner inside becomes the, the new water main. Lining is, um, keeping the pipe the same size, putting a liner inside of it to, um, increase its structural integrity. We've never done either of those on water, we've done them on sewer, pipe bursting, um, so we've got some research to do, but, um, we think there are opportunities, we have to select areas to do this. It's a little bit, I think, once we figure out, um, the best way to do it and those contract documents, we can, um, do it economically with uh, somewhat reduced staff time, but I think that's one of the ways that we're looking at doing this. The other thing is, I, I need more, I need engineer staff that's, um, that's gonna stay with us, uh, to help manage this work. Um, one last thing I didn't put on here is just kind of exciting, that was we're color coding our fire hydrants by flow, but you'll see them around town, they start up on Berlin Street. Pick reference for the fire department, but they can go up, uh, each color has a different flow rate. Well, as part of that PER, we have them, um, identify every single hydrant and how much gallons per minute you can get out of each hydrant in the whole city. And it's gonna take us a couple of years, but we're gonna get all of those, uh, color-coded, which is pretty cool.
And for the people out there in television land, PER stands for?
Oh, preliminary engineering report, yes, sorry.
Thanks.
So it's my turn again, and I get to be brief, and, and Kurt gets to be long-winded, so I can appreciate that. Um, so we're gonna hit into the sewer fund now, uh, slightly less complex than the water fund, until you get into the wastewater plant itself. Um, but again, self-supporting enterprise fund funded by user fees and not taxes, and this one's to cover the full cost of safely collecting, treating and disposing of wastewater and maintaining our sewer infrastructure. And so here you'll see the budget snapshot from twenty-six, again, you've got charges for services, the benefit charge Kurt had mentioned, uh, that's allocated to the sewer fund, along with penalties, interest and, and other miscellaneous revenues, uh, like grant funding. Uh, again, you can see, uh, you've got the offsetting expenses related to the delinquent collections, sewer system collections, and then the primary um, cost here is the wastewater treatment itself. Um, and so as we move through with the revenues, you can see here, I've given you total revenue. I'm also showing, um, of that revenue, how much is septicage, leachate, um, and other, um, hauling that's brought to the city, uh, that we charge for, and that is a great, um, revenue generator for the sewer fund, it really, um, helps with capital infrastructure. Um, and as we continue to evaluate our capacity, the more we can take, uh, you know, the more favorable it is from a revenue standpoint. Um, next, we'll move into expenses, uh, similar to the, uh, water fund here. I'm showing you the different expenses by category and, um, fiscal year, uh, slightly differently, so you can see, um, the sewer fund. Its primary expenses again are the wastewater treatment itself. Um, just for a second here. So then, uh, debt service in the sewer fund, you can see, um, it has been, um, or it, it is uh, trending downward, but I, I want to note that that does not include Phase Two. Um, I do not have estimates, um, for Phase Two of the wastewater plant in here. Um, just, uh, the portion of East State Street, that's part of Phase One, uh, of East State Street. So there will be big debt from USDA related to Phase Two that will increase the debt service in this fund. Um, but that was expected when we headed into the project, and then you can see here the list of debt that makes up the sewer fund, um, and in twenty twenty-seven, you'll see down at the very bottom, twenty twenty-five dash one, that's one-third of, um, East State Phase One, um, coming online and, and having to pay that back. So then, uh, again, similar to, uh, the water fund, we are doing the one percent in line with the master plan. You can see in orange that one percent capital investment increasing year over year. Um, you can also see the debt year by year, uh, I will note that twenty-two is an anomaly. Um, that's around the time of the, uh, closing of the wastewater plant Phase One, so there would have been a ban or gan repayment at that time, um, which skews the debt, um, that you'd seen previously. And then back to Kurt.
Okay, so the master plan here is, uh, structured, you know, the same way as the water plan, uh, one percent plus CPI annually. Um, the, the focus on the sewer side is really, uh, CSO elimination, so that's combined sewer overflows, that's when, um, heavy rains causes this, the combined sewer and rainwater to overflow to the river. Uh, which I'll go into a little bit more detail on one of the, on the next, uh, couple slides. Um, so we are under permit requirements to, um, continually reduce our, uh, combined sewer overflows. Uh, so that's, um, the preliminary, the primary source of our funding, um, is allocated to a work associated with that.
And this is a graphic on the right of um how where our combined sewer overflows are. Uh there's six left currently. Um the city, when it was constructed, when the sewer plant and the collection system were constructed, there were twenty three. So there's been lots of progress. Um a lot of money through the nineties of separating streets, separating the stormwater out of the sewer system. Um but there's uh there's still more to do. I think we've done um now that East State Street's been separated. That was sort of the last big projects other than Cliff Street is still combined, but um not planning to tackle that one right away just because of the amount of ledge there and um concerns with stability of that ledge. So I think the next step will be uh moving towards um lining uh areas of the sewer main that are in wet areas to reduce infiltration. The old clay tile pipes, they don't have gaskets, so groundwater comes up, it goes right into the sewer pipe. Um on the left is uh we we found um this year that uh we were having more overflows. Um even after we separated projects on State Street, uh we did a big drainage project and um finished it in twenty three. Uh and so we started investigating and we found that um the collection line um along the bike path um was uh very full of debris related to the twenty three flood. Um so we got a contractor on board and and rented a bypass pump and cleaned um fifty approximately fifty tons of material out of the collection main, um which has now since dropped our C S O frequency way back down. Um so yeah, FEMA paid for that. We did squeeze it in, which is, which was great. Um but uh it was a a fairly big and uh project that had to move very quickly. Um yeah, what's up? Uh so a little bit about the plant. Um there's a lot of interesting things happening at the plant. Uh there's four operators there. We did a sixteen and a half million dollar project in twenty one. That allowed us to take in um food waste, increased our receiving capacity for septicage. Um it allowed us to store methane to heat the buildings. Also, it's really an energy efficiency project, but also a way to uh make revenue. Um but of all the things the city has, I think this is, this facility is run most like a business. Um we have uh individual contracts with all the haulers. Those go up every July uh by CPI. Um we set rates based on the cost to treat of every um different type of food waste that we take in uh through our consultant at E S G. Um and uh and we're making a a lot of revenue from hauled waste, and that's not monthly residence. So that's uh other towns, people with private septic systems, other municipalities, we take their sludge from their plants and treat it. Um so it's a great way to supplement uh or offset rates for um monthly users. Um so in twenty one, uh we won the APWA award for uh best project um in environmental category for the project that we did there. Um in two thousand twenty three, the plant started sampling um through a program that uh publishes results on viruses and pathogens and wastewater. We actually make twenty five thousand dollars a year from doing that work, but also there's a benefit to um to the community and and really the country to track. Um you know, the uptick in viruses gives you an early warning. And that's all on uh the city's website, and you can also get it, I think, um the end of next month on the Vermont Department of Health website as well. Um so and um and last year, we had had a record revenue of one point four million dollars of hauled waste, so outside of user fees. Uh our next project um is estimated to be coming uh to cost around ten million dollars. And that will be for our disinfection system, order control and the secondary clarifiers. Uh hoping to start that um next year. We're in design right now, final design. Um our staff at the plant also runs the whole district heat system, at least the controls for it. The um the garage staff runs the piping, um but but the four members at the plant run district heat all where. Uh well, they also manage our um overflow alarms. We have electronic monitoring on our um six overflows that are remaining. And so they report, it's required to report to the state on volumes every time those go off. And they also run the ice melting system. Um so for flood flood control, they have a pump station at the wastewater plant. Where we pump, treat it effluent and melt ice when there's a risk of flooding. Um and the plant is really a a model for uh Vermont, and the state uses it to train their inspectors and um the Vermont Roll Water Training Organization uses it to train um upcoming operators that want to get licensed. So. And so just uh quickly on receiving, um the upper graph is uh a total revenue annually. And you can see that we've had steadily been increasing that revenue um from, you know, around eight hundred thousand when we started to one point four million dollars last year. But that's at the same time, we reduced our leachate revenue due to P F O S concerns. So um if we're able to up, uh increase leachate back to where it was, uh we could be close to two million dollars of external revenue, which is almost half the budget for the sewer. Um as I mentioned, we take leachate, we take septicage, municipal sludge, food waste, um and all these are automatically programmed in. There's a keypad the hauler's put in, and it goes to the correct area on the plant for the proper treatment. It's very modern, very um high tech sort of facility. And it's and it's a regional facility, so we're serving all of central Vermont. Um there's a real need for um for a place to put this waste streams. There's really the only place it goes to wastewater plants. Um so we're only competing with other towns. We're not competing with the private sector. And this is just a graph of the uh electrical use. So you can see um basically, I just wanted to show that um we do a lot of energy efficiency projects in-house. Um and although there was an uptick during construction of the last project, we're back down to uh where we were um in two thousand fifteen, even though we're processing twice as much waste, and that's through all the small electrical efficiency projects we've done.
So with that, you know, we're at questions. Um I didn't you didn't prompt you with any options this time for questions to think about. Uh you know, Ben sent some really great questions uh that we'll be getting back to him on, and some of we incorporated into this presentation. Uh we really just are trying to give you as much information as possible as we head into budget season, so we can make, you know, good informed decisions and and where to take these funds uh capital operating and otherwise. So if you have any questions now, um you know, we're happy to take them.
Uh with the continent, which is that every year when you come in with this report, it's just very clear, very informative and well done. It really helps us as decision makers understand the these important elements of the system. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I I would say, oh, like, hey, thank you for, it's a really informative presentation. I love seeing longitudinal data around the breaks and the costs. I would love to see like the contracted expenses included on on some of those, on some of those numbers. And um you look forward to continuing conversation.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks. All right, we are up to oh, look at that, we have a budget for thirty and we came in at thirty five. So really good. So yeah, so. Mike, I am nine, filing fee for appeals.
Community Council and Mayor. So I'm gonna turn this over to Matthew, who is online, and uh we had a request to do some work and look into what are the actual costs it costs staff to do um process appeals. Um so we get, uh there are two types of appeals. One is an appeal of a zoning administrator decision, and those go to the D R B. And then there are appeals of the D R B decisions that go to environmental court. So that's a s- kind of a separate fee, but we kind of tasked and gave uh Matthew uh the opportunity to go and look at, you know, study up, what are all the different costs, work with Meredith and find out what it would actually cost us in time to put these together. It's in your packet, but I'll turn it over to Matthew to give a quick presentation on on what he found.
Yeah, good evening, Council. Um you can hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yep. So uh can I share my screen? Is that possible?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So this is
Before you start, Matthew, why don't you tell everybody who you are? This, I think this is your first uh time presenting before the council, so welcome.
Thank you. Uh yes, so my name's Matt Lysik. I'm the city's new community and economic development specialist. Um I started at the beginning of September, uh prior to being here. Uh I was in school and prior to that, I was the senior infrastructure policy advisor at the U S Agency for international development, where I ostensibly directed all construction policy for the U S government overseas. Um Mike and Meredith and I uh worked hard to try to figure out all of the costs involved uh in an appeals fee. We charge, currently the city charges three hundred dollars. Um that is more than Burlington, which charges two hundred and fifty, and South Burlington, which charges two hundred and thirty three. They have a additions, two hundred dollars plus an extra fee. Um those are the only comparables I have. But the actual cost that the city bears uh for every appeal is significantly more than three hundred dollars. So these are conservative estimates on the costs. You can see the uh hourly rate for Meredith and for Mike um times the number of hours. But again, those are kind of very conservative estimates of the number of hours. And even the conservative estimate, the cost to the city for every appeal is approaching one thousand seven hundred dollars. Um so we're subsidizing every, the city is subsidizing with labor uh for Mike and Meredith and the the planning office itself. Um almost one thousand three hundred dollars for every appeal. And this is also important, as Mike said, when the the appeal leaves the city and goes to the state level, although the amount of staff time is usually less, it can go dramatically higher. Um there was a key uh a project that Mike had to prepare for, and it took him over a hundred hours to prepare for uh deposition with the state. So as we start to consider uh what the response to this should be, um it's important to recognize that, of course, we don't want to jeopardize citizens uh right to appeal, but we also don't want to be giving away a lot of time for free in these tight budget uh uh situations. Are any questions?
Um how many appeals are there uh in a average year or over time?
Uh not very many. Um I think that's a perhaps a different discussion um in insofar as why aren't there more appeals? Uh there are just not that many um opportunities to appeal. Um
Part of the reason, part of the reason is that we've designed zoning correctly, so most people get their permits without having to appeal, right?
Um these are appeals that are people who are trying to typically, these the appeals that we're talking about are the ones where people have appealed a decision because they don't want something built, not because they do want something built.
Oh, interesting. Okay. Adrian?
Yeah, so I was just gonna make sure, um you know, Sal and I brought this forward. It's I think this is really critical for us to think about. Um and it's really timely as we start thinking about really pushing for development and and knowing that other um opportunities are trying to be developed in Montpelier housing, right? We all housing. And so this is, and I don't know, when you've, this, the data piece of this is really hard. I think you know, what are those lost opportunity costs? Because I think from what we've heard through the grapevine, right? Fact, fiction, I don't know. You know, developers don't necessarily want to come to Montpelier because of our extreme nimbyism. We have a very bad case of not in my backyard. And so I think as a city, you know, how do we overcome that? How do we educate our neighbors? How do we have communication campaigns to say, you know, we need housing and and guess what? It's gonna be in your backyard. And so, you know, one example is we have a development going up on Town Hill Road and um you know, the neighbors appealed. They're friends of mine. They called me, said, how can I appeal this? I do not want this house in my backyard. You know, we've lived here. This is not what we want. It was a, you know, gonna be a quadplex homeownership, and it stalled out, lost a season of construction. And it's really, you know, I think in the whole purpose of this, our appeal cost is three hundred dollars. So anyone can appeal a project, just and it has to be reasonable, right? There's a whole statue around it. You don't really have to have too many restraints. And so I mean, we can talk about what those regulations are, but one of our thoughts was, you know, within our sphere of control of city council, under the law, we set the fees when it comes to, you know, appeals. And so the state, it's on our city plan to look at, you know, changing the state law, which is obviously much harder, more timely, um would cost a lot of money with lobbyists. So within our sphere of control of the city council, you know, we asked Matt to say, well, what is a reasonable fee? You know, three hundred, we know, is too low. Because people can just go and file this fee, and it delays a project, it costs money, and we don't have housing. And so sixteen hundred dollars is at a reasonable fee while still allowing people, you know, the right to appeal. We don't want to take that right away, but um we don't want frivolous appeals just to stop progress, knowing that people literally do not want houses built next to them, near them, within the vicinity of them. Um so I think it's a multi factor issue. I think this is one avenue that we can control, but I think it's also a communication issue that we need to let our community know that we want to build housing. We want to build housing in your backyard. And how do we make that happen in a way that we can all work together? Um and, you know, I think this was just one opportunity to look at potentially restricting some of those or limiting them just because it's easy, it's cheap, and it really doesn't you know, do much to the person, but it has a huge impact on progress. So that was just a little bit of background I wanted to share as to why we're talking about this today.
Thanks, Adrian. Anyone else on council?
No, I actually just like to hear from the people, and I know there's a lot of people here who would like to speak to it.
Yeah, you know, Mike?
Uh I guess just wanted to add in one other piece on the on the process of how appeals work. We certainly we certainly could have a different fee for an applicant who gets denied and wants to appeal that to the D R B as opposed to a a a neighbor, but there's certainly that opportunity. I also wanted to point out, even in our fee schedules today, um what we have is a rule that says if you appeal and win, you get your fee back. And really, it just comes down to the fundamental fairness. If if you're gonna take the time to appeal to say my staff didn't do their job right, then and you prove my staff didn't do their job right, then we shouldn't be charging you money to prove to me that we made a mistake. And so we do have already in our fee schedule, if if you appeal and and you win, so yes, uh if if you made a change to say sixteen hundred dollars, if they demonstrate that there was an error made by the staff, then they would get that money back. But if it is a more frivolous appeal just to delay the project, there would be a, there would be a cost to them to delay that project. And so that, just just so you have a little bit of framework of the process, if you went that way, we do refund fees, because we do want to reflect the fact that if if we make a mistake, we don't want to charge you for that. So, and we do, uh and and we have. Um we also have in the process, just so the public is aware, when we do an appeal, um Meredith is our zoning administrator. She um she makes all those decisions. She's delegated authority. I can't tell her what to approve and not approve. She makes all those decisions on her own. If there is an appeal, that comes to my desk. I then take over the appeal, re-review all the facts and come up with a new thing. She then becomes the defendant. Actually, I think last Monday, there was a defendant in the appeal, um and she has to defend her decision um in in that, because and so it for, just so the public knows, we, you know, we take appeals seriously. We want to make sure we get an independent review. Um we want to make sure we get things right, and there are um uh at least two occasions where, one occasion where I found in my recommendation that um there was an error made and recommended to the D R B to a award in favor of the appellant, and another time where I believe the D R B ruled in favor of the appellant. But for the most part, these um generally go in favor of the zoning administrator, but there were have been two cases where it was demonstrated that there was an error that was made. And so I did want to point that out just for the public to know that, you know, we And so I did want to point that out just for the public to know that, you know, we, you know, we take seriously doing and being accurate, but when you do hundreds of permits a year, there are going to be times where something happens. And so we, we encourage people to have that opportunity. And we don't want to block people from having that opportunity, but at the same time, we also don't want this used as a weapon.
So Mike, what you just described applies to appeal of administrative decision. What about at the next level of the DRB? How to think, when the, when the, when the DRB's decision is?
That goes to the next level and it goes to environmental court, which is now actually Superior Court, a division of Superior Court. But yes, so, and that's really out of our control. In some cases, we are, we are always participants in it. But in some cases, we participate a lot if it is an actual appeal of, of us. A lot of times when it goes to environmental court, it is neighbor versus applicant. And in which case, at that point, it's a de novo hearing, heard anew at that level. And we are just bystanders. We will sometimes be called as witnesses. But I think as Matt pointed out, there are cases where we will be the, the appellant. We had a case where somebody appealed to say our zoning bylaws did not meet state and federal law. In which case we are actually going there as the defendant and we had to prepare for that case. And we usually win in environmental court. But it does delay time. But getting to Ben's point, I know there were some people who wanted to provide some.
Thoughts from members of the public?
Good evening. My name is Chad Simmons. I'm, I live on J Street here in Montpelier. Longtime listener, first time caller, so thank you for doing the work of the city. I am here to speak in favor of the city, looking at options to charge fee or at least shine a light on the impact of appeals on housing permits and the attempt to build housing in the city. For my day job, I work for the Vermont Housing Finance Agency. I'm not here on behalf of the agency, but I have, I do have some insight as to how this impacts the construction of housing across the state. There is a couple of things I just wanted to point out. One is the financial impact of appeals are both real and also perceived. And we've talked a little bit about it this evening. The real part is anything that has state subsidy or taxpayer dollars. Anytime an appeal happens, those dollars can't be put to use. And oftentimes in housing development, that means a project becomes more expensive and taxpayers are left paying far more, and especially in this day and age, for the construction of housing. Two, and most importantly, I would say, is it creates a chilling effect on housing development. There are going to be less opportunities for developers of any type, nonprofit, for-profit, to say, yes, I want to build homes in that community if they see time and time again, appeals blocking the development of those homes. The other part is just the real life choices that, that has on people, on the residents or future residents of the city. In 2021, there were approximately 24,000 renters who could afford, who could theoretically afford a median priced home. By 2024, in three years, that dipped down to 9,300 people. 9,300 renters could afford a median priced home, which is a long way of saying homes are too expensive right now and it's getting harder and harder for people to have choices to live. Being able to predictably and easily build homes is one way in which we, as a city, can make it easier and more affordable for people to get into homes. The last thing I'll say is my personal story. Our family moved to Montpelier from Brattleboro five years ago. So we were, lived in Brattleboro for 15 years. We owned our home for three years prior to moving up here. And we just recently, almost two years ago now, bought our home on J Street. The house we bought on J Street was two and a half times more expensive than our home in Brattleboro. So as you can imagine, and just about done, that makes it very difficult for our family to be able to afford a lot of the things that we like to do. And we have two very good incomes. I would just, just reflect that we've been, as a city, struggling as, as a downtown, as a city. I would say a lot of that is because many of us are having a tough time affording to live here.
Thanks, Chad.
Yep, thank you.
Is there someone else in the room? Like, yes, come on up.
So, good evening. I am Angie Harbin. I am here tonight as the Executive Director of Downstreet Housing and Community Development. Downstreet in Montpelier, we create permanently affordable rental homes and homeownership opportunities for our lower and moderate income community members. I think we've heard tonight, I think everyone's really aware that we've got a housing crisis across the state and in Montpelier. And to echo Chad, one of the most helpful things that a municipality can do is help us create predictable and reliable housing development processes. So if you are a developer and you've got a project and it meets existing zoning regs, you're, you're meeting all applicable standards. You have a, you're presenting a project that, you know, fits within or aligns with the community's housing priorities, that project should be able to move forward. And I think what we're all aware of and the reason most of us are here tonight is, right now, it, it takes a single appeal to completely stop progress, even if there isn't any, you know, legal or technical basis for that appeal. And I'll give you an example, just from Downstreet. Current example, we have proposed four single-family homes here in Montpelier. These are permanently affordable homes. They'll sell for around $200,000. We need those homes in Montpelier for sure. And right now that project is stalled because of an appeal from a single household. Best case scenario, so our very best case scenario, there's a six-month delay and we're adding about $30,000 to that project. That's, that's what we're hoping for. Every time an unnecessary or, or a justified appeal drags out a project like this one, you know, it's driving up the legal on development costs. It's also discouraging the housing development that we absolutely need in our communities for affordable housing projects where the margins are already razor thin. That, that delay, the time delay, the increase in costs can very well kill a project. And the smaller the project is, the more likely that is to happen. We're very concerned about our four units right now. And I just want to add, I mean, this doesn't quite touch on what's being proposed tonight, but that, you know, at Downstreet, we care very, very much about community participation. We are highly invested in, you know, lower income residents' ability to have a voice in shaping their community. But that voice needs to happen at the policy level. It needs to happen when we're creating the zoning regs, when we're, you know, creating the design standards and we're deciding what our, our housing priorities are going to be for our community. That's the time for people to step in. You know, it's, it's not through repeated appeals on individual projects that already need existing standards.
Thank you. Next up?
Hi, everyone. My name is Seamus Lombardo. This is my first meeting. I'm a former renter and new homeowner here in Montpelier. I live on Grandview Terrace. I'm here to provide information that I hope informs a process that mitigates the spending of our limited resources on what seem like often frivolous appeals and generally easing and expediting housing development in Montpelier. There are multiple reasons I support this fee change, but as we've heard tonight, the core of it is that we're in a housing crisis. You know, this state and this town needs more housing for working families or we all lose. The Bridge reported this July about our stagnating tax base. We see articles about our struggling downtown, but we don't want to build housing for more customers for those businesses. Our state workers, like my wife, are returning to the office, but those who live far away will have no place to move and our services will suffer. We're worried about rising school taxes, which are driven largely by health insurance benefits in a state with an aging population, but we make it near impossible to unburden the system by allowing young people to stay or live in Vermont. This is to say nothing of the homelessness problem in our state, which is driven by housing scarcity. My reasons are also personal. My recent home buying search was a huge struggle. I care deeply about this town and when my wife and I moved here, we sought to get involved as members of the community. I'm the robotics coach at the high school. My wife works for the state. We both play Irish music in the session in town. I'm excited that my wife is pregnant with our first child and we wanted to further ingrain ourselves in a community by buying a house and raising our kids here. I'm lucky to be well-educated with a PhD from MIT in aerospace engineering. That's a level of education that used to be synonymous with being financially set. However, it was difficult to afford even a modest home in Montpelier. I want my child to have other diverse children to be raised alongside, but housing scarcity, a direct consequence of frivolous appeals, makes it impossible for working families to live here. So I hope the information that you hear tonight helps the city, you know, not spend its limited resources on addressing what seems like frivolous appeals. So.
Thanks. Tim Senate, see you online.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Tim Senate in District One, and I'm also a planning commissioner. Thanks for your time. I wanted to speak briefly in support of this proposal. Raising the appeal filing fee will create a more balanced and efficient permitting process for new housing. The higher fee would, would not restrict access to the appeals process, but ensure that the process functions as intended. As a mechanism for reviewing genuine disputes, not frivolous appeals intended to delay and ultimately squash new housing developments. Appeals that lack merit directly undermine city housing goals by deterring housing developers from pursuing local projects here. The increase in funding feels, it, it fees ensures that the city can recover its administrative costs, reduce misuse of the appeals process and better support housing production goals consistent with our newly approved city plan and community needs. Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
I feel like I'm probably going to be reiterating some things that have already been stated tonight. My name's Zachary Hunter and I've been a building professional for about 20 years. Since moving to Montpelier in 2010, I've built five new single-family homes and have worked on many renovations and other additions throughout the city. I want to start by acknowledging the positive steps that the planning commission city council have taken to update our zoning and create more housing opportunities. I think there's been a real attempt at streamlining the process that has encouraged density and infill. And I think these are essential to be meeting Montpelier's housing goals. Despite this progress, I still hear a familiar refrain when new projects are proposed. I support housing, but, and here we are. This but signals an underlying resistance to development and it's one that can be amplified through the appeals process. I think appeals are important for fairness and for oversight, but they can also be weaponized, used to delay and derail projects that have already earned approval from city staff or the design review board. Personally, I've been involved with three appeals and so far the results are always the same. There's an added cost to the applicant, which has already been highlighted tonight. There's an added burden on city staff and an added cost to Montpelier taxpayers. In the end, there's always months of delay at best and we're delayed in delivering new housing to our community. It's important to note that the threat of an appeal is enough to stop progress before it starts. It creates a real chilling effect. Small, local operators like me may choose to walk away from projects because they can't risk the uncertainty, the time, the legal expense that even, that even a baseless appeal can bring. And I think that that fear discourages exactly the kind of modest, community-based development that we say that we want. The issue is that people with little skin in the game can halt viable projects with minimal consequences. Those costs, whether it's staff time, hearings, legal review, can add up quickly for taxpayers and applicants alike, especially when appeals turn out to be frivolous or without merit. We need a better balance. The appeals process should remain open for genuine concerns, but not to serve as a tool to obstruct needed housing. I urge you to consider reforms that protect fairness, discourage misuse and allow responsible, community-supported development to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. James Moore, with, on, just off Town Hill Road. And I've unfortunately had a lot of personal experience with appeals here in town. I'm three for three. Three projects that I've worked on to build housing here in Montpelier have all met the appeals process and likely finding their way to the environmental court. I don't think a fee change is likely to dissuade most of those people who are appealing the projects. So I don't think this is about punitive. For me, it's about why would we waste city resources subsidizing frivolous behavior that is counter to the goals stated in our city plan? And I think at least getting the municipality's costs covered is a very reasonable approach. I did want to share a little bit of good news. I had the opportunity to listen to Kevin Chu this past week on the, from the Vermont Futures Project. And two years ago, you know, they do an annual poll, the Vermonter Poll. Two years ago, 60% of Vermonters said that they would support increasing housing to increase the population in Vermont. Two years later, that number is nearly 75%. It's over 73. So there is public process or public progress. People do want the housing. And as has been highlighted, it takes one person in the general neighborhood to file a frivolous appeal. So I do think, you know, the city shouldn't be subsidizing that. I will say that it's, to me, it's not an either or. Councilmember Gill spoke about, you know, the sphere of influence. I think you all have a sphere of influence here with the city fees. I also think it's called out in the city plan, this needs to be addressed at the state level. If there's a public process that creates our zoning regulations, that is where the input needs to happen. But then if we have projects that strictly meet our zoning regulations, they shouldn't go into two years where it's up appeals. And that is a change that needs to happen at the state level. And I think that you all can play a role there with our former mayor, with our state senators, state representatives to encourage them. They're going to be considering that issue this year. There are a lot of small steps and some big ones that I think that need to be taken to actually move Montpelier forward when it comes to our housing. And I think this is a good small step that you all could take. My request is that you actually take action.
Thanks, James. Thanks. Are there any other members of the public? I'm not seeing anybody. Oh, Steve?
I'm not a supporter of frivolous appeals. I make real serious appeals, but I point out a connection here that we pay for government and to constantly take away services that we collectively pay for and turn them into billable cost recovery centers. We did it with water and sewer, we do it with stormwater, we do, or we will do it with stormwater. But my point is that you can't keep taking away services that people relied on for decades and start turning them into cost recovery centers. It's just a hidden tax. And there are legitimate appeals. I think we should ask for the numbers averaged across the applicant's appeals. I think what we heard is that we were seeing the, the numbers for the opposition appeals and that they're, that we should base this on better, on a more complete data set. that we should base this on better uh on a more complete data set uh and not put a seventeen hundred dollar uh hurdle in front of somebody who might have legitimate uh concerns or uh legitimate reasons why they should, something should be appealed. But I also want to point to a core contradiction here, that we claim that our development regulations are the high road and yet just look at what we're doing with Country Club Road and the traffic engineering or the geotechnical boring or the remediation of the toxicity. We, we lose all credibility as a building and planning department if we cut corners. I mean, Mike Miller said his job is to find a way around what the law, the lawmakers didn't know what the hell they were doing. Our job's to find a way around it. And and he's demonstrated that that's what he's doing. And so you can't really claim that you're gonna be fair and equitable with these, this appeals process when you're flagrantly ignoring sound practice and law with our city plan, with our Country Club Road development. So let's not be hypocrites about this too. So I'm not for frivolous appeals, but let's get our own house in order.
Thanks, Steve. As I was listening to the comments about this, uh, I was thinking back to what someone said in the discussion of Country Club Road and the RFQ, which was that the, someone said here that the, we didn't get the parking garage and the hotel downtown because they weren't popular with the people of Montpelier. The fact is, we didn't get the parking garage and the hotel because a tiny group of people were determined to keep litigating it and and did litigate it until the company uh was no longer willing to accept the delays that uh that that litigation, that frivolous litigation created. And so I think this is a good point. So um where are we here? I I assume you don't have a proposal to so I raised the
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, uh, so uh, this was asked by uh Councilor Gill and
And Alfonso, I think, yeah.
I don't know, to 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 bring this to you. And so we we put together the facts, we brought them to you. The opportunity you have is to go and direct staff to go and bring an amended fee schedule back to you with whatever types of changes, if you wanted to make differences. We also can have more conversation about how we would like to amend the fees. Uh, but to amend fees would require a a motion on a new uh, it's it's a policy change, so it's not an ordinance change, doesn't need two readings, it just needs one to change the fee schedule, and that would have to be at another meeting, but we would need to have some direction as to what you'd like us to bring back.
Adrian.
So I'm gonna make a motion that um to um, I hereby direct the city staff by our next council meeting, November twelfth, um, to propose a change in the fee structure that would apply to all appeals of administrative permits associated with new housing.
And do you want to put a a dollar amount?
I would say a fee not less than sixteen hundred dollars to cover the minimum expected costs.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion?
Um. May I?
Yeah.
Uh, I I um I mean, the sixteen hundred dollars makes sense, I think, because it's uh, it's a documented, you know, uh, average cost. Um, but it doesn't include expenses of an outside legal counsel, for example. I mean, that may not happen often, but it adds up when it does. It's also, I mean, I don't know what the rules are of an appeal, but I assume that a group of people can get together. You can get sixteen people to kick in a hundred dollars and pay sixteen hundred dollars for what is essentially a frivolous suit. I mean, I guess I would like, I would like the staff to explore the, as I understand it, the the city is restricted to uh the meaning of the word reasonable when it comes to the fee. That's that's what we can change, is we can, we can alter the uh the fee, providing that it's reasonable. We, we can't change the criteria and that sort of thing.
Yeah, you can't change the the criteria. Generally, appeals in of a zoning administrator decisions are usually directed at, there's a certain things you have to talk about. Here's, here's my, you know, the the remedy that we want. Here's the error that's made, but most appeals at this level are really about this decision is wrong because this, you know, you didn't measure the height correctly or um if these very black and white, because the zoning administrator decisions are very objective, they're not the subjective ones. So an appeal to environmental court of a DRB decision could be talking about character of the area and these other more um, subjective things. So usually these are pretty objective. Somebody's gonna appeal, they're gonna have to tell us exactly what they appeal. It doesn't meet the setbacks, it doesn't meet the height.
It's the same fee for either of those? Can there be a an escalation of fees if it moves from one to the other?
Uh, to environmental court?
Yeah.
The environmental court fee goes to the environmental court.
Does.
And and it's set by
That's set by the state, yeah. So we're
Well, I guess I'm just urging uh staff to explore. Um, I mean, I I think we want this to deter frivolous suits. I mean, we we don't want to take away the rights of residents to appeal a legitimate concern that they may have. But we want, we wanted to, uh, we want them to have some skin in the game and that that, I'm hoping, will eliminate frivolous suits and frivolous appeals and um and still allow people to make a legitimate a legitimate appeal. So that would, that would be within the definition of reasonable. So I I would encourage, I don't know how to um add that to the, as a friendly amendment, but to, for staff to explore um additional, additional costs that uh would be considered re- to be reasonable.
In my motion, I put not I said um a fee not less than sixteen hundred. So that means
Maybe that covers it?
Yeah. So they could come back with, you know, if Matt continues to do his great research and, you know, add some more variables to the equation and it, we can defend it as being reasonable. You know, I think the motion is, you know, not less than sixteen hundred, so it could potentially go up if we factor in additional variables. So I just wanted to make sure that that was my intent.
Yeah, I'm totally supportive of this. I think just from a strategy point of view, though, we do want to make sure that it can be justified as reasonable. I mean, this is gonna put our appeal rate five times higher than the city of South, you know, than South Burlington. And you know what? That might be a good thing for the city of Montpelier to like put a flag in the ground and say, you know, we don't take frivolous appeals. It could change reputation. We also just want to make sure that it's legally justifiable. And, you know, so I just think like, you know, and I think actually covering our basic city costs is pretty reasonable. But I think we just want to make sure that we can bat the eyes on them.
Yeah, I believe you in in the memo that um Matthew attached to this cover sheet also goes into community costs, which uh the these get very significant when, especially when you go to the environmental court. The community costs, think about every, not not just cost to the project, but to the community. Uh, we need housing. Uh, every person that is homeless or is the the lack of housing and driving of housing costs, it has a community cost. That has a very personal cost to people who can't get housing because they're simply enough. But it also has a community cost because of the services that need to be provided, because we don't have those. And those are all costs that aren't captured in this. These are just the municipal costs, sixteen hundred is just what it costs us. And we felt, we really couldn't get too much into the community costs because the delays are weeks and months to get through our process. But certainly when you start talking about years, um, the impact is is significant. But we can certainly explore other ones, Sal, if if
Well, I was just
He's willing to look at them.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say to add that I think I I I like the idea of uh the current uh policy where we uh we refund your portion of the fee if it if the appeal is successful. I think we should, we should try and retain that up to a certain point, but but there's a certain cost um uh to just, just to uh exploring the appeal. Anyway, we we should, we should consider that to in- including that policy in a variety of ways, depending on how large the fee gets. I mean, if it's a, if it's a really, if it's a much larger fee than sixteen hundred dollars, uh, we ought to have um um, I guess more of a framework around how that, what what part is refunded and what part is forfeit, uh regardless of the outcome.
Everybody ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thanks, folks. Um. Thanks for coming here, everybody.
Thanks for waiting.
Um, so let's just keep charging ahead and try to knock these off. Uh, next is item ten. The twelve sixteen Main Street uh RFP.
So this one I haven't had a lot of involvement with, so I'm gonna turn this one back over to um Matthew and he's a lot more familiar with uh this. This is on our strategic plan to uh revisit the twelve sixteen Main RFP.
Great. Matt, yours.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna share my screen again. This is the site drawing that is included in the current RFP. Um, the dark lined irregular shaped site on the right side of the site plan is the area that the RFP limits construction to. Um, I'm gonna show you a a different drawing now. I think that by limiting the site dimensions uh as strictly as the original RFP did, we, and also, this is a cautionary tale about asking for four hundred plus thousand dollars for the site. We've limited the interest among developers in creating a viable project. Um, as an architect, when I looked at the site, I thought, well, if we were to adjust the path of the road, uh, then we would be able to create a regular shaped rectangle, um, for example. And uh, you would need to be able to get a fire truck or delivery trucks underneath it, but that's only fourteen feet. And confirm that with the fire chief today. And so my my point being that we could rewrite the RFP to allow developers greater flexibility in the area upon which they decided to build um without jeopardizing and I think enhancing uh the potential for development on the site. Um, that that would be my recommendation is to to revisit the RP. I think we need to revisit the cost that we are asking, the the charge for the fee, the the site that we're asking. And we need to just allow the developers the room to be creative in how they solve the problem of getting housing built on this site.
Okay, thanks. Questions? Uh, let me see if there are questions from members of the council first. They they may not be. Come on up, James.
Oh, go.
Oh, I'm sorry, Adrian, you go first.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure I was clear. So we had, just process wise, we, I think we tried twice for the RFP, right? We was, what was the last one we tried? Was it, was it four hundred or was it, did we drop it down to a dollar?
Make us an offer.
Make us an offer? Was that what it was? Okay. And we got nothing. Okay, and so are, is today, we're, are you asking us for an action to reissue the RFP with like updated specifications?
I I guess what I'm asking for is permission to craft a new RFP for your review.
Okay, okay, cool. Thanks.
James, wanna make us an offer?
Uh, so I looked at it, well, the first time it came out and I looked at it the second time it came out. Um, and I've looked at it since. Um, I I just think that like fundamentally, there are some other foundational challenges that need to be addressed before any developer is gonna be seriously interested in a site like this. And I'll point you back to your zoning regulations. If you read um, the architectural standards in two dash five for the urban one district, which is the urban center district where this is, you you're painting an incredibly narrow picture of what maybe could go here. And then you layer on that the design review district requirements, and it's like, it's gotta be a sustainable building with new construction methods, but anti, you know, historic materials and your windows have to line up with the building next door. And we're talking about raising it fourteen feet off the ground, but they're still supposed to line up. And you're allowed to go sixty feet in here. But really, you're not, because you're supposed to line up with the buildings that are next door, and those aren't sixty feet in the air. So you can't get more than maybe three layers of housing on there. And then, and it's just like insane. And we say that like, oh, our zoning regs are not the problem or this or that. Like, I'm just telling you, from a development perspective, I look at that and go, oh, my gosh, there are ten thousand ways anybody who opposes this project would be able to say it doesn't comply. And take it to the environmental court for five years. Like, no way. And I'd love to build there, like, but density matters. And if you're gonna raise it fourteen feet off the ground, which you need to, it's floodplain and like, there's a road there. You're, and there's, you know, a requirement basically for retail. We want retail on the lower level. Guess what? Nobody can do retail now and make much money, let alone building new retail required. And so now you've got an entire, you know, some of your building that doesn't generate any positive cash flow realistically. So it's just like, I I think sending out a new RFP is not a bad thing. And I love the, like, the energy that Matt has brought to this and the creativity to think about, well, what can we do to this site to make it better? I'm just saying, I don't think raising it fourteen feet and putting the road under it is gonna cut it. Um, you've got more foundational things that your departments and committees need to address if we actually want build well housing. And, you know, you spoke to that Rutland example, and you listed out all of what they did to try and get a hotel and housing. This is not a straightforward lot at all. So, but I applaud the creativity.
You willing to sit down with Matt to talk about what it should look like?
We've emailed some.
Okay.
And I would love to. I can be here.
Thanks. Any other members of the public? I'm not seeing any, any thoughts from council?
I I just have one thought. Uh, I really appreciate that, James. I think I'm fully supportive. I think Matt should go back and use all his creativity and ingenuity and come back with an RFP for our review. I would also, though, really encourage um solicitation from potential developers of, as as part of that process of like, asking that question of what would it take to get you in this lot? Right? Um, and I think that that becomes a really great opportunity too for Matt or for the city staff to be just one more way in developing those relationships with people who might actually build things.
That raises a question, Matt. Have you talked to any potential developers that anyone approached you?
Nobody's approached me. I have talked to James.
Okay.
I ran this idea by him maybe a month ago. I I probably did that drawing I shared in the first two weeks I was here. It was like the first thing I did. And in my spare time, not as part of my job.
Yep. Thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, Steve Wintaker, but a couple of years ago, back when we cared about having any public restrooms in town, uh, we were talking about building, we had a, I think hundreds of thousands in ARPA money, COVID money. And we were looking at the lot next to Mobile or across from Mobile on the far side of the uh intersection opposite, opposite Mobile from the North Fields Street. But that's not a convenient place for anybody to go. I'm I'm daily dealing with tourists and and residents who live here, who Who daily speak about the Darth of public restroom. So even if this is gonna get built two, three years from now, we could put shower and toilet trailers on this lot. Water and sewer connected and actually accomplish something that we have neglected to do for so long, you know? This is unconscionable that we would even consider a lot across, you know, the intersection, across the river. For public restrooms when people are wandering around town needing them. And we've done nothing to replace the downstairs city hall bathrooms since the flood. We're tied up with FEMA. But there's just no excuse. And for the people who are, you know, trying to change a baby's diaper, they need hot and cold running water. A porta potty doesn't do it. For the people who are living outside, a porta potty doesn't do it, you know? So let's seize the opportunity to do something now with that lot. And even if we relocated a couple of years from now, once somebody gets through design and finance and permitting and engineering for a new building. But let's not lose sight of the urgent, urgent. Uh, conscience that we seem to be so quick to let go of.
Thanks, Steve. Does somebody wanna make a motion directing city staff to redraft the, uh, the RFP?
I'm happy to make a motion that city staff, uh, redraft the RFP in a fashion that they believe is gonna be competitive. For a positive outcome.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Sanctuary City Policy.
First, thank yous. I wanna thank, um, Kerry, uh, to serve. Um, on this subcommittee with me and Evelyn, um, she, uh, came to our meetings. Whenever her schedule allowed. And again, the subcommittee or ad hoc committee didn't require any city staff. Participation, but Evelyn just came and, uh, she was there, uh, with us. And I also wanna thank you all our guest speakers, uh, to come to our meeting and, um, answer our questions. And share their expertise with us. And also, all the community members attended our meetings. Sometimes we had one community member, some of the meetings we had like almost twenty community members. Uh, were there with us and we, um. Met every other week and, uh, after, uh, two months, uh, of time, uh, we, um. Stop meeting and, uh, try to write our memo, uh, to you. So we did so many different. Um, research, we just like check other sanctuary policy, uh, city, uh, policies. We check a fair impartial policing policy. And then we ended, ended up three recommendations for you today. Uh, first, um, all the research and work with it on our sanctuary city policy and. Uh, fair impartial policing policy. We just wanna reaffirm those things. We decided there's no need to make any changes. Um, the second recommendation is, um. State has, um. Specific, uh, links and items, steps for the people who, um. Wanna, you know, uh, reach out or learn their rights, what to do, when they need to do something. I forgot the name of the, that document. Uh, but we wanna have it displayed on our, uh, city, uh, website. Um, and, um, Kelly and Evelyn think that because it's a state document, it is okay to have it. Um, and the third, uh, recommendation is the most important one. Because during our subcommittee meetings, we've heard from different people, one account concern. They don't wanna make Montpelier, um, like be targeted. Or they don't wanna target our vulnerable community members. But they kept saying to us, but we need to stand for our values, Montpelier values. This is very important time to say something because we are having very challenging times. So that's why, uh, our subcommittee wants the city council to consider either. To accept a resolution or statement. So which one is better for you to, uh, explain and highlight material values? The subcommittee is okay with it. And that's why we shared a sample text for a resolution and also for a statement. So tonight, um, if we can have a vote. Um, to revise the city, um, website with this, uh, state, um, document. And also to choose either a statement or resolution. Um, to highlight, we respect our values and Montpelier is a city that. Lives for its values, which are important for our community members. So I can answer any questions you might have. Kerry, if you wanna add anything, um, I'm happy to leave the floor to you.
Very, thank you. Um, Palin, that was a great overview of what we did. I, I do wanna echo your thanks to the community members who came. We had a lot of members of the public who came. Um, at various points and contributed. And as Palin mentioned, a, a theme that kept coming up for us. From the members of the public primarily was, please don't make things harder for people who are already vulnerable. And are already at risk. And, um, so we had to be really, we really took that very seriously. And that's why, um, this, the suggestions we have of the statement or the, the resolution are. Um, really just a statement of values and not, you know, we're not making drastic, drastic changes. We're not really. But, um, I think this is a way for, I, and I don't have strong feelings about either one. I think, you know, the one is great. I think it's, it's good for us to be able to say this, these are what our values are. The, um, the document that you were talking about is from the Attorney General.
Oh, yeah.
And it's guidance for Vermonters on immigration enforcement. And so that is a document that can be on our website. And so it's a way to provide some resources for people who are wanting to know more and wanting to know, you know, sort of what people's rights are and what the laws are. And I think that's important because it's kind of part of our, how we put our, our values into action. We did spend a lot of time discussing the fair and impartial policing policy and considering whether changes need to be made. And we heard from migrant justice and we also talked with the police chief. And did a bunch of our own research on it and came to the conclusion that, well, what we have now is what the, the entire state has. And so we thought it was a good idea to stick with that at this point. And it's pretty good, pretty strong and good. And makes it clear that we, I mean, there are other communities in the country where it's not clear whether the police can. Or will assist ICE in their, in their efforts. And in Vermont, it's really clear that. That's not the job of Vermont law enforcement is to assist ICE. I mean, there may be sometimes when it, when there, there needs to be information shared. Or, you know, something, but, um, but generally, the federal government is in charge of immigration enforcement and not the local government. And so that's what our fair and impartial policing policy does.
Thanks, Kerry.
And one thing came out good with our subcommittee. We just noticed that our city website has bought. Two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-four, uh, FIP, uh, policies. So Chief, and now just removed the old one because it creates confusion among, uh, community members and also for us too. So it, that wasn't like a planned, um, strategy. But this is good that we have the subcommittees because it allows us to see things in a different, uh, perspective. So, um, do you wanna vote first? If city council wants to go with the statement or resolution, resolution, how, how should we move forward?
Well, what I'm thinking, and obviously I don't get to make a motion, but I, I can't see any harm with. A motion that has us adopt the resolution and post the statement on the, on the webpage.
Okay.
Public. But I don't know if someone, if someone wants to make that motion or if someone has different thoughts about it.
Okay, good. It's, it's great news. You wanna use like both of them. Okay, um.
Do you wanna make the motion, Palin?
Yes, so I will just like, uh, read the recommended action if it is okay. The sanctuary subcommittee respectfully urges the city council to authorize, authorize, uh, the interim city manager. Reaffirm Montpelier sanctuary and FIP commitments without changes. Ensure residents have a clear access to rights-based information provided by the Vermont Attorney General. And approve the H, H resolution and statement to codify and publicly restate the city's posit- position.
Alright, is there a second? Is it clear enough for? Any discussion? All those.
I just wanna thank the subcommittee for doing that work. Yeah, it's important.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Yeah.
So, uh, I got a comment. I thought I would. Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah, yeah, you can.
The, the area that kind of falls in, but Steve Whitaker again, falls between the cracks here is the, the fair and impartial policing. Where I see that rubber hitting the road is the intimidation and the harassment that the police do of the unhoused folks. There, there's no, there's no grounds. And even the city manager posting Country Club Road as a sensitive area. That's, that's harassment. That's just fundamentally unethical, unsound, and it wasn't even. A action of the city council. But what are the rights? I think we should be explicitly publishing the rights of the unhoused, uh, where they can be without harassment. As long as they're not committing another crime or creating a public disturbance. You can't just have people constantly roustied and roustied and roustied and roustied because they don't know their rights. And this is an area where the fair and impartial police, the policy does not cover it. And the lack of oversight by the council of the police department doesn't cover it. So this is an area that should be posted on our website and in handouts for people. These are the places where you cannot be. The area behind the chargers, you know, there was no reason to tell those people they couldn't be there. Uh, unless they were creating a public disturbance or leaving human waste around, you know? That, but I guess it's a, it, it falls between this. This is, uh, they're treated like immigrants. But they're getting the brunt of the, if, the partial policing policy. So I'm just asking you to find a way to address this and post their rights, uh, and make it clear. Because you don't act when I bring problems to you and you need to. And you cannot allow a city, assistant city manager to designate a big piece of acreage, a hundred fifty-eight, thirty-eight acres. As a sensitive area. Any designation of a sensitive area should be a council vote, not a, not a staff vote.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Kelly, yes.
Two comments. Um, one, um, there were, uh, public safety concerns by the chargers that we did. Um, take care of today. Um, and so that there actually were behaviors that, you know, really were dangerous in that location. Um, and two, I would just like to speak to Country Club Road based on the policy that council adopted. We are in compliance at that location. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Folks, we're on to item twelve. Then I think this can be quick, uh, increasing the membership of the, uh, housing committee. Jim, do you wanna?
We have a meeting. We thought we would ask who wanted to be alternates. We've got no takers. So I suggested, let's, rather than take, waste time trying to appoint two, which were the. Disturbed two people for sure. I said, why don't we just make it to. Expand it to from seven to nine and have everybody be a full member and not feel that they're an alternate. So.
Great. Do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that. We expand it from seven members to nine.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, appointments to the planning commission and the historic commission. Someone wanna move those appointments? Is there a second? Any discussion?
I just wanna acknowledge Paul Carnahan as a wonderful resource to our community. I think that thing that he does in the bridge is incredible. I served with him on the Montpelier Commission for Recovery Resilience and he's been an incredibly thoughtful person that understands the history of our city. And have seen him in action on the Historic Preservation Commission and that is kind of my day job. And, uh, I just really appreciate his service to our city.
No, I agree. And I was gonna, I should mention that I had, uh, an email exchange with, uh, with Paul. Earlier, uh, this afternoon because he was raising the question of, you know, as we restructured. How we do the timing for, uh, items on the agenda. If we put appointments at the very end, then we may lose people who, uh, might want to. Who might be candidates for appointment. And so we, we can continue to think about that. So all those in favor, do, do we already vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, council reports. Jim? Kerry?
I, I have no report.
Sal?
I just wanted to thank the members of the subcommittee on a job well done, I think. I'm looking forward to, uh, results.
I just wanna thank Sal for his leadership on the subcommittee. Other than that, no report.
Uh, Fallon?
Some great news, let me say. So our youth committee, um, is part of a central Vermont project now. Uh, we are, um, our committee was invited to, um, be one of the stakeholders. To collect data from their, uh, school committee and also Montpelier. Uh, about the future of education and they will present it to the legisla- legislature, legislature. Uh, so, uh, until, uh, January, we are attending, uh, monthly workshops. Uh, in Raldop as a group and also Superintendent, um, is also there with us. So when I see our youth committee just doing this work, it is like really, um. Great, um, to see them. We are really civic leaders. And trying to find a way, uh, to contribute our society. It is really great to see this. And we need eight community members for our, um, interview groups. Because in addition to, uh, school, uh, stakeholders, uh, we wanna ask our community members about their education. Uh, their ideas about future of education because, um, taxpayers, uh, have a say in that. Second, uh, second news, they are, uh, related. So childcare task force. Uh, will give a brief, uh, to the city council, um, November nineteen. And also Economic Development, uh, Growth Subcommittee. Uh, we will bring our initial recommendations to the city council on the same, um, day. Uh, November nineteen. So that's all from me.
Thanks, Adrian.
So just give a brief update on, uh, the Vision Montpelier project I've been working on. So I think it's on the agenda, um, Kelly. For the twelve, um, just to confirm that. And I'll work with you to put together a cover sheet and timing and all that stuff. But just, just to acknowledge the community members on that project, there was a six-week course held at the Montpelier. Um, Main Street Middle School and a course held at the high school. On this topic with local architects and planners teaching our youth. How to plan and design a, um, community and the community was Country Club Road. So I think, you know, I'm just so proud of this that our youth got taught how to. Use skills that they're not typically taught in our public school system. And that they're gonna be walking away with knowledge of designing, planning, landscape architecture, um, architecture of buildings. Um, and they got to use our beautiful location here in Montpelier as a, um, template for that design. So we'll be seeing those students', um, designs on November twelfth. As well as the Norwich Architecture Students that will be submitting some of their ideas and a couple other community members that I'm aware of. So I'm hoping to bring some of the students in just to share their experience of learning this skill through this project. And, um, you know, just seeing what they came up with. So I'm, I'm excited to share that with you all.
Thanks, Adrian. My report is just to reiterate that I think it's very encouraging. My report is just to reiterate that I think it's very encouraging that. We've taken another step towards the, the new neighborhood on Country Club Road and hoping. That it bears fruit. City clerk? City manager?
Just a few things. So the first thing, and Kurt's here, so you can back me up, but it's a bit of good news. So there's water pooling out front of Bear Palm Books related to the paving parks that we did that, you know, on state domain. And we are going to be reminiscing that with a couple of drains. So we should take care of that while in advance of the winter season. So we'll put this, that's gonna be happening actually this Thursday and Friday. So it's happening very soon. The next thing, and these are in no particular order, the subcommittee on committees. Like to just sort of get the nod to get that group back together so that we can, you know, do the policy work. And just kind of close the loop on all the pieces that we've been working on. Evelyn and I have been working with Alex Geller on some pieces. We've been working with Adrian. On some other policy development items, just to kind of shore up some of the pieces that we worked on earlier. So things are really kind of coming together. And I think we'll also be able to take some action around some of the open committees that are still kind of outstanding. And so I just like to do the subcommittee thing with that and then bring it back to you for final consideration. So I'm getting some nods. That's good. The other thing I wanted to mention, we're at October 22nd, and so time flies when you're having fun. We need to do our annual report picture. And so I just wanna put that out there for everyone. So we need to think about where we'd like to do that and when we'd like to do that. I'll ask. Sort of full, but I just wanted to kind of put that on your radar. The legislative committee, so we need to get that group together to talk about our legislative agenda. It's really important. There are several items that, you know, just in communication, we, you know, brought up during our meetings that we'll wanna talk about. So I'll work on getting that group together and then we'll be working on getting our legislative delegation in, in advance of the session. So that's coming up. And then agenda timing, I know it's almost 11, so I'm really sorry about the timing. But we're gonna try to keep working the agenda to try to restructure a little bit. But I didn't wanna lose sight of Carrie's email and some of the comments around just the timing of the agendas in these late meetings. We really appreciate all the work that's being put in and getting through the agenda items. That's awesome. But what I do wonder and just think about it, you know, it is a heavy lift for staff, but if we need to have weekly meetings to clear the decks, especially with budget season. And to keep the meeting shorter, we could also consider that. And so I just wanted to put that out there, just to let you know that we're thinking about it and wanna make sure that you get what you need. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thanks, Kelly. Hey, look at this. Before 11 o'clock. During at 10:57 PM. Thank you, everybody.